Good evening, I'm calling back this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District's Board of Education to order. Item 4.1, the Pledge of Allegiance, which we led this evening by Superintendent Jorge Aguilar.
Thank you, please stand. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Superintendent Aguilar. Item 4.2, the broadcast statement, which will be read by Board Member Shay.
Good evening. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Hubert. Today's meeting will air Sunday, October 4th at noon and Monday, October 5th at 6:00 p.m. And also webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comments, either by submitting comments, which are posted on our website, or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public were also provided the opportunity to speak to the board during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comments to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda.
Thank you so much, Board Member Shay. This next item, item 4.3, is our stellar student. So we have the opportunity to recognize two stellar students from the Student Advisory Council. Speaking tonight, we have both Board Member Shay and Sarah Faraj.
Thank you President Ryan. We're speaking on behalf of the 18 members of the Student Advisory Council tonight. The SAC this year is comprised of 18 students, as we just said, from every high school, or almost every high school, not including some special programs. This year, we've achieved increased racial, socionomic, and geographic diversity within our members. It's more representative than ever before. We started virtually with the COVID-19 pandemic, obviously. And so we've been working to breach some of the lack of communication and problems faced specifically during social distancing. One of my colleagues, Sarah Faraj of JFK, saw a lack of communication reaching students and help, and a lack of help within the district for some students. So she worked to launch the SAC exclusive, our monthly newsletter, and I'll let her take it from here.
Hi everyone, my name is Sarah Faraj. So the COVID-19 pandemic has clearly exacerbated a lot of pre-existing inequalities, both within our nation and also within the district. And it's highlighted a lot of issues like the lack of communication between students and our administration. When faced with the decision of what creative way would be the best one to handle this unique issue, we decided that creating an interactive newsletter would be the best solution. The SAC exclusive is a short newsletter written by students for students. Our first edition, which was released in September, included information on how to set up Zoom, how to have Wi-Fi installed, and how to find nearby meal pickup locations. This month's edition features college resources, brain teasers, and scholarship opportunities for students, grade 6 to 12. Our monthly interactive newsletter allows students to share their thoughts and opinions in diverse ways, including through the nomination of a Teacher of the Month. Last month, after sorting through over 220 nominations, we selected 10 teachers from various SCUSB schools, and we're going to continue to recognize three teachers per month.
Right. So we sent out recognition certificates to those 10 teachers. I just wanted to recognize them really quickly. We have Tara Nye of Studderville Elementary, Frank Coys Schmidt of Matsuyama Elementary, Brittany Barbone of John D. Slow Elementary, Megan Allen of Theodore Judah Elementary, Christine Olmstead of Alice Bernie Waldorf, Jennifer Peters of Sutter Middle, Alyssa Kuo Barra of Willsey Wood Middle, Gabrielle Deceo of West Campus, Inga Templeton of CK McClatchy, and Matt Nowman of Rosemont High.
And once again, on behalf of the entire SAC, we wanted to thank you for the recognition of the stellar students.
Thank you both, we so appreciate your effort. And I want to also say, in addition to the exemplary work you're doing to bring student voice to the forefront of everything we're doing, we're very eager to make sure that we continue to highlight the bright spots of educators and support staff throughout the district that are helping students like you succeed. And so we look forward to continued partnership to be able to do that in the coming weeks and months. Thank you again for both of your time tonight. Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
None, Madam President.
Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Do we have a motion and a second? Student preferential vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, President Ryan. We do have one public comment, a live speaker, Terrence Gladney, on this item.
On agenda adoption, or on the prior item?
On, on item 6.0.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I know that in, I was looking, because I haven't obviously been able to participate in a lot of the board meetings, either virtually or in person, obviously. In previous board meetings, we did have a standing item at least once a month for a facilities report. And as a bond oversight committee, is specifically important to me that I'm updated, because we only meet a few times a year, so we basically meet quarterly. So especially now, given that our facilities have become the homes of our students and families, I feel like it's more important than ever to have that standing report and not one-off reports, especially for clarity and transparency. And perhaps if we did have, hey Mike, if we did have a standing report, then perhaps there could have been ongoing disclosure of the savings that were referenced in the discrepancy between our budgeting. And if that was something that was reported continuously for months, then perhaps there would not be any confusion or lack of trust in the information that was provided around the budget and the millions of dollars that were referenced because of things like savings on electricity. So I would hope that maybe, you know, we could restore that, especially under the new leadership in the facilities department. I will hope that that would be something that we could consider.
Mr. Gladney, we appreciate your comments this evening. Item 7.0, special presentation, 7.1, the update on the start of the school year.
Evening Board President Ryan, Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris, Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability. I'm excited this evening to present with several colleagues to give an update on the start of school. Go to the next slide. Much like we've already discussed at a high level, the global pandemic has created the conditions for a real new normal across the system. Even those things that we might typically take for granted have had to be rethought in order to meet the demands for safety, quality, and to ensure appropriate delivery of services. And so tonight, you'll hear from leaders across the system about the new normal that they're doing in their work and have an opportunity to hear assurances in terms of how we've taken opportunity to rethink and actually with some fidelity, implement a strong launch to the school year. With that, I'll turn over to our Director of Nutrition Services, Diana Flores.
Good evening, I'm Diana Flores, Director of School Nutrition. I first want to give an update on our current meal distribution. This past week, we served 50,000 meals on one day. That is our highest meal count since March, when we closed schools. The need in Sacramento continues to be great. Part of the reason why our meal count is so high is because we have changed our operations this fall and been able to serve every child four meals per day, meaning they get breakfast, lunch, snack, and a supper. We are doing that five days a week. So that is one of the biggest reasons why our meal count is even higher this year. We're also partnering, our strong partnership with the Sacramento Food Bank has grown. Last year, we were serving five sites weekly family food boxes. And yesterday, we began our family food box program and we are serving 29 sites, family food boxes. In these boxes, you'll see a gallon of milk, eggs, cheese, produce, and cooked meats for all our families, which helps fill the gap for others living in the household beyond students. We also have an update on our vegetarian meals. We have expanded our vegetarian meal options. And we've also included vegetarian meals on every service day, be able to reach families that are looking for something other than meat proteins. We also have identified on our menu now, all the items that are vegetarian. So it's very clear for our school community. I'm also giving an update on our central kitchen. And we're very excited that we have been planning a central kitchen launch during a pandemic, but we have figured out how to do that. And the building will be complete mid-November. We would be honored to host a Board of Education tour of the facility in December, and we're working on some plans to get that on the calendar. Additionally, our nutrition office will move into the new space in January, the new office spaces. And hiring for the central kitchen will begin in January. Once we've hired all of our staff, training on the specialized commercial equipment will begin. And we would like to have a grand opening event scheduled in the spring of 2021. Some of the unintended challenges that have occurred have been some hiring and critical department reorganization challenges. We are looking to get back on track with that, but many of our staff and HR staff have had to be pulled away for other COVID-related duties. And lastly, we have been developing a customized software inventory program that is a bit delayed because the vendor had some delays due to COVID. That concludes our return to nutrition updates, and next slide.
Hello, thank you Diana. Tonight, I'm going to explain what attendance looks like during distance learning. Not the same as in traditional school. We're not just looking at whether a student shows up, we're actually tracking daily participation or engagement. The Senate Bill 98 was very clear in defining what counts as participating, or ultimately being present. First, and this is the highest level of participation, that's logging into class. So when a student logs into that live participation during a Zoom session, or completing online work, like when they're in iReady or something like that, or maybe Khan Academy. The second level of participation is submitting an assignment or a test, or some teachers have like a daily survey, like we did last spring. The lowest level of participation would be contact or communication, and that's between a student or parent and any Sac City staff. So we're actually really trying to support students in increasing engagement if we find that they are just participating at this low level of contact. But just so you know, any of these levels of participation do count as a student being present in class. Lastly, there's kind of that other, and that's any type of participation that's determined by the site administrator. Say if a student doesn't show up to their online Zoom session, but they do show up to the school to pick up materials, we would give them credit for participating that day. This is something that all districts statewide are following. And it's these definitions, they are very clearly defined in SB 98. And the reason is, is so that we can align, because we are still doing state reporting around chronic absenteeism. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is, this is a very full slide, I'm sorry. SB 98 also requires that a weekly engagement record is completed for each pupil that documents daily participation and also instruction and progress. This log ensures that each student has the opportunity to receive an equitable education, even during distance learning. We worked really hard through the summer, meeting with other districts, attending webinars, and corresponding with CDE in order to streamline the process for our teachers. We were able to change how we recorded attendance in Infinite Campus from traditional present or absent attendance to this new participation-based attendance. This fulfills half of the requirements of the weekly engagement log and really streamlines the process for them, so it doesn't take as much time. Teachers mark whether a student participated or not, and that level of participation. And this is when they go into Infinite Campus on a daily basis. Teachers have up to seven calendar days to update participation. Families will still continue to report absences, however, a student can still participate while they're on vacation or while they're sick. If they submit an assignment, that participation check that they get on that day would override any absence, because we want to get that present and that participation showing over the absence. A student, a student's attendance, so this is, this is a big one, because I hear about it a lot, but a student's attendance may not show accurately in Infinite Campus on the parent's side of the portal for up to seven calendar days. And I know that this can be frustrating, but it's so we can allow our teachers, while they're trying to navigate this new distance learning world, time to update their participation-based attendance. It's also a new way to take attendance, so we're just giving a little bit of leeway right there. And then this is my favorite piece that's different, there is no truancy during distance learning. So none of those harsh letters, nothing that's threatening, no punitive practices, just gentle nudges and a ton of support from the district wherever we can. Okay, next slide. So you've all seen this pyramid before. This is just an example of our tiered re-engagement strategy. It's also mandated in SB 98, but it is something that we have always practiced. So using student participation data, sites begin outreach to assess their needs. So we make sure that students have their devices and internet access, that their basic needs are met, and then we ensure that they have the resources that they need around health and wellness and mental health, especially in this really traumatic time for students. If participation continues to be concerning, site administrators and social workers attempt to engage the family, we then send letters offering support and informing them of our concerns. And ultimately, if we still can't engage the student, we conduct a home check-in or we schedule a telephone or virtual meeting with the family. There is a requirement that if a student misses three days in a school week or attends less than 40% of their enrolled school days, that we complete, it's called an Engagement Support Plan, an ESP with the family, to outline what everyone will do to help support the student's attendance and participation. So our ultimate goal is just to get the students connected, and we'll do that by whatever means possible. Next slide.
Good evening, President Ryan, members of the board and Superintendent Aguilar. Very quickly, we'll be reviewing data metrics available now and also that are available in the near future. These metrics are summarized with ABC reports, and that indicates that they are for attendance, behavior, and course performance metrics. The first metric reviewed has to do with the attendance information that you see on the screen. That includes attendance rate information, as well as information for those students who are considered significantly disengaged. And a student, as Jennifer was just kind of talking, who is significantly disengaged is one who had an attendance rate of 40% or less after five days of enrollment. Based on our daily attendance information from September 3rd to the 18th, and as Jennifer just talked about, teachers have seven days to put that information in. So we ran the attendance data from September 3rd to the 18th. You'll see that we have an approximate attendance rate of 93% for students enrolled in grades K through 12. If you break that down by grade span, through the 18th, 92.6% attendance rate for grades K through 6, and also a 93.5 attendance rate for students in grades 7 to 12. Looking at your screen, you'll also note that we have about 5% of our students who do have an attendance rate of 40% or less. That's why they would be considered as significantly disengaged. We're also providing, looking at providing chronic absenteeism data. However, chronic absenteeism, excuse me, requires 30 enrollment days. And so we don't have that 30 days of enrollment yet, so that'll be something we're releasing in mid-October. We have also began looking at behavior metrics for our students since the beginning of the school year. And our behavior metrics are really focused on those documented trends where a violation that occurred has been documented, and we see right now in the system that we have two suspensions issued at this point in time. One on campus and also one off-campus, and that is through September 28th. As we start to get more activity, so to speak, these metrics are going to be broken down by logistics, including location, time of day, day of the week, the type of PBIS information that will help us target and see where they are occurring. In the pipeline, there are going to be a review of district common assessment, participation data. And that's going to be based on the unfinished learning, the 2019, 20 assessments that are occurring right now. They're occurring through October 9th, and so, or should they mid-October, because some are after October 9th, and we're looking to have that day release the participation maps by the end of October, early November. And, next slide.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, members of the board and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Tu Mula, and I'm one of your Instructional Assistant Superintendents. I'm here this evening to share about the first of two of our explicit strategies to ensure the provision of access to connectivity as per SB 98. First, I want to thank you, President Ryan, the board, and the superintendent for having obtained the partnership we have with the city of Sacramento and Comcast in securing our Sac City Kids Connect program. As you will recall, Sac City Kids Connect is a partnership we have with the city of Sacramento and Comcast, whereby we have been provided Internet Essential Codes to provide to qualifying families, so that they may contact Comcast and redeem these codes for internet connectivity. Please recall that there are qualifying factors for families to be able to obtain internet connectivity through the Sac City Kids Connect program. And these factors include low income. Families must reside in an area where Comcast internet service is available. And families must not have been a customer of Comcast internet prior to our school closure date of March 16. To streamline our process of support to families, a multi-department business process was created. This process included the joint efforts of the academic department, including school principals, the support and work of the communications department, the data tracking efforts of the Continuous Improvement and Accountability Department, the expertise and support of the technology department in ensuring families are qualified via the low-income criterion, and the tremendous support of the Attendance and Engagement Office. Through our family survey of learning options, which was conducted in middle to late August, our Technology and Continuous Improvement and Accountability Department populated the response from our families into our student information system, noting if families responded definitively as needing internet or does not need internet. With that data, our schools, principals continue to receive a list of qualifying families who have requested for this service. And in response, our principals have continued to hand out Sac City Kids Connect to qualifying families. In fact, in my virtual classroom walkthrough today with Principal Gavada, as Cesar Chavez intermediate, we went through a couple of classrooms, and he pointed out to me a student whom he helped the student's parents to sign up for Internet Essentials through the Comcast partnership Sac City Kids Connect. And as you know, for families who do not qualify for Sac City Kids Connect, our schools are referring our families who do not qualify to our Attendance and Engagement Office for a hotspot. Our school personnel is continuing to update our student information system with the codes that they hand out. And as you can see, the data to the right shows the number of codes we have handed out since late August, not counting the codes prior to that, as those families would have responded as not needing internet in our August survey. Ultimately, we know we have an obligation to support our families in need of connectivity. Thus, we have a second strategy to support our families, again, who may not qualify for Sac City Kids Connect. And with that, my colleague, Ms. Jennifer Kreschman, will now share with you more about how we are deploying hotspots. Next slide, please.
Thank you so much, Tu. That's really great information and so very thorough. Hotspots have been really key to removing the barriers for some of our most vulnerable students. So based on that same survey that Tu was talking about in August, we determined that we would need about 1,200 hotspots. Hotspots. We had 300 starting the school year. 215 went to students and 85 to staff. We just received an additional 300, it was actually yesterday, not 200 on the slide, that was my error, and delivered them to sites to deploy to the students that had requested them. We are set to receive 600 more in the coming weeks and have created a systemic process where site administrators contact the Attendance and Engagement Office to process the request and get the devices either to the schools or to the students directly. The criteria to receive a hotspot is listed down on the slide. I actually don't see it, so maybe if you click again, it will pop up. It should be in the upper, there you go. But the first, the first piece is our most vulnerable families, and those are the ones experiencing homelessness. The second criteria is if they are unable to qualify for Internet Essentials program. And we know that can take time sometimes as well to get the wiring set up or whatever. And in that interim, we have hotspots available. The third criteria is to have three or more students in the home. So basically what we're finding, I even found it in my own home, when I'm trying to work from home and my daughter is doing her online work, the bandwidth just isn't enough for all these multiple Zoom sessions. And so we provide hotspots to families that have three or more students trying to do schoolwork at the same time. And the last piece is like other extenuating circumstances. So we have provided hotspots to families where they have a daycare facility that they send their student to, and they are doing their schoolwork during the day, but it's not at home. So it's a mobile hotspot, it travels with the family. That's just one example. We are working with the communications department now that we have some hotspots available and more coming in to inform families of the availability and how they can request one. Our goal really is, because we know that in the normal school year, you have to have schools in order to teach, we have to have students to have the ability to connect the computer, their teachers, and to their peers. So our goal, like Tu said, is to get every student connected. And so from here forward, we are going to be really working hard to get these hotspots in the hands of students who need them. Next slide.
Good evening, I'm Victoria Flores, I serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And so now we're going to switch to the reason why we need hotspots and devices, which is that we're all, you know, hunkering down and trying to keep ourselves safe while we deal with this pandemic. And so we got some really great news this week. On Tuesday, every Tuesday, our county monitoring level is updated, and Sacramento County moved to the red zone, which is really great news. However, I do want to throw some caution out here to point that when we were last in front of the board, speaking to this, we were in the purple zone on 9/3. And you can see, we had 12 cases per every 100,000 residents, and our positivity rate was 8.1. We are now at 6.8 cases per 100,000 residents and 4.6 positivity rate, but we've gone up a little bit even since last week. So we really want to double down and make sure that we're wearing those face masks, we're keeping that physical distance, and we're really only having close contact with those in our homes. We have to stay at this red criteria for two full weeks, meeting that red criteria, before schools will be allowed to reopen. So our goal here is turn orange Sacramento by Halloween. So I offer and hope that everyone takes that challenge on and practices really safe Halloween practices. Next slide, please. So one of the ways that we can also support our health and wellbeing this year in particular is to get a flu shot. And our Sacramento County Public Health Partners are really urging everyone and all of our physicians, because dealing with the flu on top of the COVID pandemic can be really difficult for our healthcare providers and really impact our health and safety. It's also very difficult to discern flu symptoms from COVID symptoms. So if more of us get that flu vaccine, hopefully less of us will have to deal with that. So Sacramento County Public Health has started their free flu clinics, and we have their flyers posted on all of our social media. We will be hosting a clinic with Sacramento County Public Health at Hiram Johnson High School on November 10th. I'm also really proud to share with you that we're hosting two additional flu clinics with Health Net. One on October 21st at John Still K8 School. We'll also be providing dental screenings for our students at that time. And then again on November 4th at Willsey Wood Middle School, again, also providing free flu shots and dental screenings. So we really encourage everyone to go get their flu shot. Next slide, please. And the one other thing that I'll add on the flu shot is, we met with Dr. Cassirier today and Dr. Harris from Sac County Public Health, and they did share that they're seeing twice or sometimes triple the amount of people showing up for the flu shot. So this is great, we want to, we want to provide our communities lots of different opportunities. Sacramento County Public Health also spoke to us about their program that they were going to launch one of the last times Dr. Cassirier was with us, about launching free voluntary COVID-19 testing for all school staff. We are considered essential workers. We are considered essential workers, and this was a really key component of being able to safely bring students back on our campus. So they've worked really hard to create testing sites at 10 community locations that are spread all throughout the Sacramento community. And there are testing slots and times that are dedicated solely to school employees. So when staff go online to log into that appointment, it specifically asks if you're in a school and employee, and you will be prioritized a time. We're also hearing that testing results are coming back really quickly, quickly. About a day and a half to two days, people are getting a phone call and an email following up letting them know. Sacramento County Public Health does recommend that staff, at least 25% of all staff test every two weeks or half the staff every month. So we really want to encourage people to take advantage of this free opportunity. It doesn't cost the employee anything or the district. This is another strategy that we can use to detect asymptomatic infection and really break that train of, chain of transmission so that we can be targeted and efficient in breaking, breaking all of those cycles. So we've got all this information also listed on our website as well. Next slide, please. And so this does really lead us into becoming, you know, ready to bring students back onto our campuses and our staff. And so this was a slide I shared with you all last time about the CDPH's small cohort or group guidance. So while schools are closed and in distance learning, we are allowed to provide these small learning hubs, is what they're called. And so we're beginning to work with our expanded learning partners on how we safely bring back some of our most vulnerable students. This applies to all grade levels, so K-12. Again, we have to really identify those most vulnerable students, students who aren't engaging, like Jennifer was talking about. We want to do that targeted outreach to provide them that safe space to learn. We can't exceed more than 25% of the school's population. We have to them, keep our groups together in what we call cohorts of no more than 16 individuals. So it can actually be any mix of adult and student, just no more than 16. And then we are allowed to provide one-to-one specialized supports or testing. We would just pull that student out, work with them, and then have them join back to their cohort. So next slide, please, and I'll, I'll tell you how we're, we're starting to, you know, consider doing this. So this is really putting our return to health plan in action. We've been using this plan as our employees have come back, as we've done material distributions to get those hotspots out or those devices. So we've had a lot of time to practice. And now we're really looking at how do we provide those targeted support for our students. So these are our daily personal mitigation measures, and we've walked through all of our expanded learning partners through these processes, looking at active daily screening and then also screening throughout the day as needed. Face coverings worn by all staff and students, and we talked about what, how to wear them and how not to wear them. Physical distancing between all individuals, even within the cohort, right? That's really important, that even in our cohort, should we have a positive case, no one else contracts COVID because we have really good measures. Lots of hand soap and hand sanitizer in all of our spaces. Facial tissues for those sneezes or replacement masks should a child sneeze into their mask. We're really encouraging everyone to get the flu shot before program starts and for our expanded learning staff to also participate in that free voluntary COVID-19 testing. And Ma'am Preet's going to walk you through some of the more, the physical mitigation measures at the sites.
Good evening, respected board members and dear superintendent. I'm Ma'am Preet and Director of Youth Development. Earlier, Victoria talked about some of the mitigation measures in cohorts. And in these slides, I will specifically be talking about learning hubs that we are going to start soon. So at each school site, we have controlled drop-off and pickup. Every site, there will be two places where active screening will be happening and parents will be able to drop off. One table will be screening table for those students who will be coming in cars with their parents and one for walkers. So at each school site, cohorted groups within defined areas. So in, at school sites, we will have all the classrooms where the learning hubs will be hosted. They will be at one space on one side of the school. And this, all of our schools, six school sites, when we visited, they did really, really cute and beautiful things. They had red ribbons or yellow. They tell the student not to mingle with other adults, and they will be staying in their specifically designated areas. All the classrooms, we are making sure windows and doors, the windows are opening so that it's well-ventilated areas. There will be no sharing happening at all in these learning hubs. Each student will have their own backpacks with their supplies. All expanded learning providers who are working with us, they are making sure that they purchase enough supplies and school, students, individual desks are, have enough supplies, so no sharing. Meals are breakfast and lunches will be either in the classrooms or students will sit under the shady areas or trees in order to have meals because outside area is promoted by county. Separate care room for sick individuals. Every learning hub will have a classroom that will be a designated wellness room or care room where we will have our, those students who either are sick or having some flu-like symptoms. And those, we are making sure that those wellness rooms are well-ventilated. Those students can be hosted over there until their parents, guardians come and pick them up. Standard protocols for responding when someone is sick. Our Health Services Department will be responsible for this, and all of our expanded learning partners will be contacting them if they see or hear about any COVID-19 infection. There will be daily disinfecting happening every night when students will be gone home. Our facilities, operations will be responsible for disinfecting all the classrooms and the student desks. Next slide, please. And in every classroom, we have a hand sanitizer that's wall-mounted, and it's, it will be filled with 60% alcohol, which is a content which is recommended by the county. We also know that soap is the best hands cleaning product, so we will make sure that for younger kids, they have enough soap in the classroom so students can use soap, wash their hands, and then use paper. There will be enough facial tissues and face masks. Our risk management, our facilities, operations have already have enough of facial tissues and face masks for all of our students in these learning hubs. You see this in this picture that we made sure that each desk is six feet apart. And in some class, schools, classrooms, it's more than even six feet. In the front of each classroom, we are making sure there is no hazardous material. There is no blockage for any kind of movement for students or anything that can hinder in the, hinder the movement of staff and students. All shared object, if there is any bookshelves or any baskets that student or markers students use to share, everything is being covered with, or it has been faced the other way around towards the wall, so student will never touch those things. Spray a bottle of disinfectant. In all classrooms, we are making sure that there is a table where there, there is a disinfectant bottle. If there is an accident in the classroom or the staff need to clean or disinfect, if students sneeze or cough, then staff will have the disinfectant handy so that they can clean those areas. We are making sure we have enough posters, floor markers, desk markers. All pathways are being marked where students will be walking. Those pathways are being marked either with chalk, with ribbon, or with some kind of sticky paper. All doors and windows, our facilities is making sure that all doors and windows can be properly opened, closed when, because we also know sometime the air is unhealthy and we get the order that we cannot open our doors. So we are making sure that they open and close whenever we need to do so. Next slide, please. So in the, in this slide, I'm going to talk more about what is a learning hub and some of the logistics, who is partnering with us and how, with whom we are collaborating. So what is a learning hub? A learning hub is a cohort of student and staff that will help to get the students engaged in distance learning. Authorized by California Department of Public Health, we started working on this when we heard about that CDE is allowing community partners or nonprofit organizations to have students out on school sites to help them engage in distance learning. And that happened like almost six weeks ago. Six learning hubs will be starting on October 8. I'll quickly say their names. MLK, Isadora, Honjan, Brillo, San Brennan, MLK, and Harkness Elementary. Being mindful of all the details, we, our risk management, student support services department, and also facility operations, they have done it great training for our expanded learning partners, principals, and our, all of our administrators who will be engaged in overseeing these programs. Doing workouts, a team of 20 people, SCUSD employees, administrators, plant manager, custodians, they walk through all these six school sites as a team. We had a checklist. We marked everything that is right, and we also marked everything that we need to change. We, we are requiring our agency partners to do parent orientations before they start the program. We are not asking them to do one orientation. Instead, at least having two or three so that we can accommodate all of our parents and we can attain our expectations and all those safety measures. We are also emphasizing on the need of staff, as Victoria Flores earlier talked about, having flu shots. I myself need to have a flu shot because I will be going to the school sites. So we are requiring everybody and asking them. We are going to do active screening every day, and the best part is our community partners are going to do the screening while students are sitting in the car so that they will be going to the car, screening the student. If temperature is right, in that case, student will come out of car. We are having smaller students to staff ratio. Even according to CDE, we can have 16 total bodies in a cohort. But we are not going to have 16. We are only going to have 12, 10 students and two adult staff members. Those will be the community partners, the staff, so only up to 12. Training by district staff, sharing best, we have asked all of our community partners and our principals to share with each other what is working at their site and what is not working. Designated marked one-way student pathways, and this one is so beautiful and cute. Like every pathway halls, there are arrows, and students will only be walking one way and not touching each other. There will be no two-way traffic at any of our learning areas. Recommending routine COVID testing for staff. We have sent an email to all of our community partners, asking them that they need to recommend monthly COVID voluntary testing provided by county. Next slide, please. So we are, this is a collaboration. No one department can do this work. Everybody has to come together. So our Student Support and Health Services Department, Risk Management, Facilities, Operations, Nutrition, SCL, School Site Administrators, Administrators, and Youth Development, we are all working together. Taking from custodians and plant managers all the way up to all of our IASs, everybody is working together to make learning hubs successful. Collaborating with the city of Sacramento and three other existing community partners. So one of the partners is, as mentioned, city of Sacramento. Other three are Sacramento Chinese Community Service Center, Center for Fathers and Families, and Leaders of Tomorrow. City of SAC and YDSS, we are also collaborating with the city of Sacramento at three of their learning hubs. And I want to distinguish over here, the learning hubs that are being run by city in their community sites, those are community learning hubs. From different sites, students are attending those. But that are happening at those six sites, those are specific to school sites. So only students of those school sites will be attending those learning hubs. Priority populations include foster youth, student experiencing homelessness, students in special ed, children of essential worker, and children of SCUSD employees. We, I'm, I'm very glad to let you know that we had a really good turnout for applications. And at some of our sites, we had to close the application after two days because we already had the number that we were looking for and, and even more than that, 40 students. We are planning to open more learning hubs on October 22. And we are very excited to have our students back after March 13. This will be the first time they will be coming to our school. And thank you. And next slide.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. My name's Matt Turkey, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. I am here tonight to talk to you about Zoom security mitigation measures. As we engage in distance learning, Zoom has been a critical tool for teachers and students to engage in synchronous learning. To increase the level of safety for our students from inappropriate or offensive disruptions from unwelcome people, known as Zoom bombings, the following safety measures for setting up Zoom meetings were communicated in mid-September to two teachers and two principals. Not to use recurring Zoom meetings. To post the Zoom link for students in Google Classroom only, not to post anywhere else. To ask students to log in using their SAC City username and password. To ask students not to share any Zoom links, passwords, or their SAC City login credentials with anybody. For teachers to use the waiting room feature and to verify users' names before letting them into the meeting. To disable the private chat function. To mute participants upon entry. And finally, to report any Zoom bombings or other inappropriate incidents to school site administrators. To further increase security, Zoom authentication is due to be launched district-wide on October the 12. Surrounding school districts which are using Zoom, such as Elk Grove, San Juan, and Roseville, are all requiring authentication. Zoom authentication requires participants to log into the Zoom session using their SAC City email and password, removing the possibility of Zoom bombings from people with emails outside of our domain. Students in grades K through 3 and SDC classes have always been able to log into Clever, our single sign-on, with their badges rather than their SAC City credentials. As such, for continued ease of access for our K through 3 and SDC classes, we will not require authentication to access Zoom sessions. Communication and instructions regarding authentication will be going out to principals and teachers this week. Starting next week, we'll begin communicating in multiple languages to students and families about this change, including the reasons why we are putting it in place and what it means for students as they prepare to log into Zoom sessions with their teachers on October the 12. It is important to note, however, that even with authentication in place, which is an added layer of security, we cannot totally eliminate the possibility of Zoom bombings. If someone somehow gets a valid SAC City email address and password, they will be able to access our Zoom spaces. As such, we'll be asking students and families to keep their SAC City credentials secret and not to share with anybody. Thank you.
That will end the presentation and open it to the board for discussion and questions.
Before we go to board discussion, do we have any public comment on these items?
Yes, we do, President Ryan. We have three public comments. The first is from Liz Fenton, and it says, "Save our students." "We are here in California's capital city where SCUSD is the only district in the state with no distance learning agreement. Sacramento County is now in the red. How can we trust that if SCUSD still doesn't even have a distance learning agreement that they will appropriately, appropriately plan and act collaboratively to get our kids back to school safely? In addition, the years of a looming state takeover is destructive to the entire community. Our kids can't wait any longer." The next comment is from Alina Cervantes and says, "The Sacramento City Teachers Association, SCTA, was invited to be in talks concerning reopening of schools on June 3rd. June 3rd, meetings were held related to the district's health and safety proposal on June 23rd, July 2nd, and July 10, 2020. They were invited September 16th to resume negotiations on a successor contract so we can stop the train from going over the fiscal cliff. They were invited again as recently as September 25th and provided with four meeting dates. Our kids are done waiting. Please move forward with everything you are legally able to move forward with. If they don't want to negotiate in good faith, you have no other choice. We need a plan now, so we are ready to return when it is safe to do so. I, I also asked the board to contact the California Teachers Association and the governor's office on behalf of our children and alert them to the worsening situation we are facing in this district. It is truly alarming." And the last comment is a group comment from Angie Sutherland, Angel Garcia, Sarah Williams. Sarah Williams Kingsley, and Renee Webster Hawkins. And it says, "Dear Superintendent and members of the board, the Coalition for Students with Disabilities implores the board and the superintendent and the leadership of the unions representing our certificated and classified staff to take action now to reach agreement on distance learning MOUs and end the politics and uncertainty that hurts students with disabilities, low income, and black and brown the most. These MOUs must assure high-quality instruction and social, emotional, and mental health support to address the current and chronic inequities and bias in SAC City Unified. Federal and state guidance has clarified that the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is still in force and that there are no waivers of the rights of students with disabilities to an appropriate education in the least restrictive environment. The MOUs must ensure that these students have all of their services and accommodations identified in their IEPs provided, consistent with their rights to an appropriate education. The MOUs must also include all elements of an effective and accountable multi-tier system of supports with embedded skills assessments so that all students, not just students with disabilities, can recoup lost learning from last spring and achieve grade-level academic skills. Right now, there are countless students with disabilities who are being denied services or educational evaluation that they are entitled to. We know that there are qualified contractors who are willing to serve or evaluate students with disabilities either in person or in virtual environments, but this district has decided to withhold these services because the district staff who might ordinarily provide the services don't have a distance MOU in place or are unwilling to provide the services. Hear us now. Political strife is not a permissible reason to deny a student with disabilities the services that they are entitled to. Not only is it illegal, it is immoral. The adults leading the district and unions need to stop the posturing, name-calling, and hand-wringing, and act now. Each and every one of you has a duty to the most vulnerable students among us. Please do not go to sleep tonight until you have taken action to end this shameful travesty." And that's the last public comment.
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and now take board member comments. If we can limit our questions to two per board member. And if I can see a show of hands for those who have questions. And Board Member Murawski.
Thank you. These, these updates are always great. There's always so much to talk about, and we can get into a lot of depth with a lot of these things. I first want to thank staff for all the work, sorry, got on mute somehow, okay, for all the work that has been going on. And I guess just an overall observation, now that we are in, in the red zone, hopefully moving forward into orange by Halloween, if we all do the things that we need to do, social distance and mask, et cetera. We, we need to, I think, be able to share more, even more so than, than what we're doing tonight with our community of all the good work that, that has been going on. You know, I've been having a lot of conversations, and there are, there are just, there is so much fear out there, and there is so much misinformation, and it's, you know, whether it's just, you know, rumors or, or just, you know, things are, things are changing fast. So I really think that, you know, we need to, to think about how we can share, share out with our community in a, you know, and just be transparent about, you know, all of the good work. Like, go into maybe more detail about the facilities issues that, that were, that were taken care of, like the HVAC, the, you know, and just maybe walk through, you know, walk through in a video or something. I just, you know, I think there's, there's more that, that we can do and should do to kind of help our community understand all of the, all of the preparations that have gone into thinking about how to bring people back. And I just really appreciate all that you've done, and like, I wish I could, you know, have, have that shared more effectively, I guess, with, with the community as well. So with that, I did have a couple of specific questions. You know, first on the learning hubs, I am so glad that we're getting this off the ground. We, we need to serve our kids. Five percent of kids, you know, significantly disengage, about two thousand students. I mean, and, and I, everything I've seen so far from our data coming back is just, you know, like, exactly what you'd predict based on race, ethnicity, income, all of the, you know, the underlying factors that we're all so concerned about. So, you know, I, I know a disproportionate, you know, number of those kids are, are, you know, kids we're already worried about from an equity standpoint. So I'm just wondering, you know, because the need is so high, because we have so many kids who may be disengaged, or, you know, and Ms. Cower mentioned that there are more, there's more demand than we have ability to serve. I'm really wondering how we're targeting and prioritizing who has a slot in these learning hubs. You know, and there's, because we have so many vulnerable students, and, you know, I think you can probably say that some of them are maybe more vulnerable or more in need than, than others. So I just really want to ask how we're doing that.
So each principal and our community partners, they sent the information home. All principals, they sent it via newsletter, their texts, or their school site messages. I think we sent it through Infinite Campus Messenger, so they sent that information. Then we, login information was in newsletters. And our expanded learning partners, they send newsletters to their families every month, too. So now, you're, so that's how we advertised it. Your second question was, how are we prioritizing? So the categories that I mentioned, foster youth, students who are experiencing homelessness, students on special ed. What we did, we gave one point to each category. So if somebody marked on, not student experiencing homelessness, and then also on a student being on special ed, it means that student has two points and will have a priority before somebody who has point one. So that's how we do it. We adopted a point system. And so students, if we had some slots left, and we have more students who have no priority points, in that case, we did, we are going to do random computer-generated lottery. I hope I answered your question. So it was assigned points for each category.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And so it sounds like we were doing advertising and waiting for people to come apply into the program?
So they are applying online.
Okay, we're, did, did we, did you try to identify, or are you planning to for future rollout to try to identify the students from the, you know, from the, our EEIS system, which is the early warning system of the students who really need to be engaged in that and try to outreach to them, you know, their families specifically?
So thank you for asking that question, and our wonderful principals have done somewhat this work, too. Like, I just received a list yesterday from a principal who mentioned on the Excel sheet that was pulled from the system. We have established a system where all the data can be populated. And the student, but principal mentioned, highly recommended, need this program, and not engaged. So need this, so our principals, because they know their students better, they are looking into their system. So they are putting their comments, too. So we are making sure we have, get those students in our program. So yes, for future, once we have more slots, we open more school sites, we will be looking at different things. But to answer your question, yes, our principals are doing that work, too, and I'm sure they are talking to their staff.
Okay, okay, excellent. Yeah, I would love to just follow up and maybe gather a little more detail. And because I know we're planning to roll out more, so I just, I really, I also feel very strongly about, you know, our students who have an IEP and have a one-to-one aid. You know, as, as I think some of these families are really, really struggling right now. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that the students who have been suffering the most without these services have, have access to going to these hubs.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Do we have any other board member comments? Board Member Sheikh.
Really quick for Ms. Cor and Ms. Flores on the learning hubs. We're opening on October eighth for the first learning hubs. That's not two weeks after we've gone off of purple. So does that mean that if we go back to purple, we can continue to keep learning hubs open?
Yeah, I can take this one, man. Yes, so, so learning hubs are allowed right now, even though schools are closed and we're in distance learning. So this was something we could do even when we were in purple. And so, you know, if that unfortunate event happens and we do end up going backwards, we can continue this program.
Board Member Sheikh, do you have anything else? Wonderful.
That's all, President Ryan, thank you.
Board Member Garcia.
Hi, I'm having internet issues, connectivity issues, so I hope I don't freeze. So I, I, you know, some of my, my inquiries have already been asked, but I do have a question about the engagement part. You know, five percent of our students, as mentioned before, that, that's a, that's a really high number. But also on the attendance piece. So I noticed that, I think one of the slides showed that it's about seven days to confirm, I think, the information in Infinity Campus, I think. And then the engagement plan triggers when a student is absent three days in one week. So I'm wondering, sort of, what impact does that lag time have on, on the student getting the, the, the supports that they need? Did you hear my question? I keep freezing on my end.
Yeah, you're freezing a little, but I, I got the gist of it. And yeah, this is something, it's been a conundrum for us as well. Initially, we had the teacher window open for three days. However, at our secondary sites, it just wasn't enough turnaround time. We had teachers dealing with a hundred and fifty students. And so we can take daily attendance during their live sessions pretty easily. But having to go back and assess whether a student has submitted an assignment or had contact with another staff member, that takes time. And so what we're doing is we're utilizing the data that we have, which is that daily live attendance, to start the process. And although there's a lag time, especially for our large comprehensive high schools like CK McClellan, we had to give them that longer window, right? We have to support our teachers through this learning curve. We just kind of wrestled through all of the kinks in the system and this new process. And we have a toolkit, an attendance toolkit, an engagement toolkit. We have all of these videos that explain how to do all of this. So we kind of worked through the technical side of things, so the engagement work can really start now. We've also hired two more child welfare and attendance specialists with our grant. So they will have district-level support at all of the sites to help them do this re-engagement work. Does that answer your question? I, I, I do know the seven-day, it was a real battle, and I, and I fought with it. And, and we said three days initially, it just, we, we have to give a little bit for the teachers because they're under so much pressure right now.
I think Ms. Garcia has done. I know she is frozen right now. So just a couple of quick things, you know, I want to appreciate.
Yeah, no, I definitely want to recognize that, but I just wanted to know how that sort of, thank you.
Oh, we got her back. Okay, Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just have one question. I've asked this question, I believe, at the last board meeting. And I wanted to know if there was any update in terms of Zoom training for our teaching staff.
Hi, yes, so I can answer that, that question. So on our internet, we have updated our, there's, there's basically a link with a whole sheet on it, which has got kind of how-tos on all of our different tech tools, so including Zoom. And so that's been updated, and there's kind of like how you can log on, the different functionality within it, and so on and so forth. And moreover, we have a new instructional technology coordinator, Nova Katz, who is going to be hosting some evening, some, well, afternoon and evening time teacher sessions on a drop-in basis, starting next week. And so this is also going to be advertised as well, and we're calling them Tech Versations. And they are a kind of informal kind of drop-in. And the first of those are all going to be focused on Zoom. So teachers can come, and they can ask whatever questions they would like, and get some answers around how to use this tool.
Okay, I'm really glad to hear that, because I know I've heard a lot, that, there's been a lot of struggles just learning how to use them, and I can tell you just from, you know, running meetings myself, it's really difficult when you're trying to have a conversation and then allowing people into the classroom or keeping track. So I'm, I'm glad that we're having those conversations. And then also with the security of Zoom, and it seems like we're having a lot less Zoom bombings. So that's really good news to hear. I think that was, that's actually my only question. I'm just really glad that we're, we're, we're doing that. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. So in closing this item, and I have just a couple comments and a question. I want to thank all of the team for their work. I do want to recognize that we had several comments from parents that are concerned that in the absence of a distance learning plan, we have inequitable educational opportunities for our students, in particular, the most vulnerable students among us, including our special education students. And I just want to pause on that for a moment, because I think we had some really important data presented tonight on engagement, on connectivity, on the additional support frameworks that have been put in place. But the reality is that in the absence of a learning agreement, we do not have uniformity at all school sites across the district. And so I have heard from several constituents who don't have their children in high school receiving instruction consistent with the live interaction needed for each and every student required by SB ninety-eight. I have grave concerns from our special education advocacy community that is not seeing the IEPs of their students being met, both consistent with our moral and legal obligations. And so, you know, I do want to ask Superintendent, recognizing this absence of a learning agreement that has forced us to move forward in a piecemeal fashion, and looking at what's happening in Los Angeles with litigation that is being led by civil rights partners and parents, what are our legal obligations, but also our liabilities, based on the fact that we are arguably not compliant with SB ninety-eight?
Well, I would, I would just mention, President Ryan, that we potentially do face some of those consequences, particularly on something as basic as making sure that we are compliant with SB ninety-eight from an attendance and student engagement certification process, for example. I, too, have been following the situation in LA Unified, and it seems a bit ironic that, that that action was taken even in the presence of an MOU. And that the point that you're raising at this time is just as significant and as serious without an MOU. And so we certainly are going to continue to do our best to bring more consistency across the district, even absent an MOU, because that potentially could put us in a situation where we could be in the same circumstances that LA Unified finds itself at the moment, even with an MOU. We would be happy, I would be happy to make sure that, that we come back and in a similar format like this one, provide more details about where we think we are in terms of seeing greater consistency, and also acknowledging where we're not seeing the level of consistency that our students and families deserve as well.
So my, my final question, Superintendent Aguilar, and thank you for, for that response, is, you know, consistent with Board Member Murawski said about needing is, you know, consistent with Board Member Murawski said about needing to do a deeper dive into these issues, given the urgency that we have before us, I would like to recommend that we pursue a town hall similar to what we did in the past, looking at school reopening, distance learning, and the considerations that families and community members need to be aware of. I would hope that we could take it down a level so that it is less philosophical and more practical for the majority of families who need to be able to access information and are reading in the paper about piecemeal reopenings that are happening at districts throughout the region. So I would hope that we can prioritize that and figure out a way to make it accessible across these critical issue areas that we're hearing from families and students they need addressed.
Yeah, absolutely. President Ryan, and before we move on, I I too want to just lend my appreciation and thank the staff for all of their hard work. You can see that it takes a lot of cross-departmental work to be able to manage a distance learning plan, particularly one without an agreement, is just going to be a bit more complicated. But our team has really stepped up and leaned in to try to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students and families. I was inspired earlier today, for example, by a principal, our principal at Baker Elementary, Nate McGill, who simply sent an email because we were able to deploy mobile hotspots to some families that had been displaced due to a recent fire at a housing complex. And that just speaks to how even as a large urban school district, we have tried to adapt as best we could and be nimble and agile and be as responsive as possible. And and that is really reflective of of all of our staff in Sac City Unified, trying to do their best. You heard from our Nutrition Services Director, just the amazing work of how many meals are being distributed. That that meal count on a daily basis, of course, exceeds what we used to provide on a regular school day. And that also speaks to just the very serious consequences that this pandemic has brought on to our students and their families. So I just, again, want to thank our entire team for all of the work that they are in, that that they're engaged and doing on behalf of our students and families.
Absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent. It looks like Board Member Pritchett has her hand up for a final comment.
I'm sorry, just real quick, another question for Mr. Turkey. Hi, thanks for coming back. I'm just curious, in in regard to the training that you had mentioned for our teachers, when will that be announced to the teaching staff? Have you already sent that out to the administrators? Because you said it's supposed to take place starting next week, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, that's that's correct. So we have a communication which should be going out tomorrow to principals and to teachers, and then starting next week for students and families.
Okay, but we'll make sure that that goes out tomorrow to give them enough time to plan for that. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you to the entire team for your updates tonight. Moving on to item 7.2, the Federal COVID-19 Relief Fund Discussion. Once again, I just want to do a time check. We're running a little more than an hour behind right now. Tonight's important conversation will be presented by Rose Ramos.
Good evening, President Ryan, Board Members. Tonight, we're going to be presenting to you, or I'll be presenting to you, some information on the COVID-19 relief funds that we've received from the federal government. I've given you some information in the past, and we're just going to provide a quick update here. Next slide, please. So on the agenda is just a recap of the federal funds that we were awarded. And then we'll just go briefly over the allowable uses, and then I will turn it over to you all for some discussion and some questions. So the federal funds that we've received are from these four categories. And the and there's a different expiration dates and different amounts. Now, you'll see that, you know, they have different titles. And the reason for the different titles is because that was just the allocation method that the government used to allocate. They use, in some cases, ADA, in some cases, some of our student populations. And then in another case, they use our Title I allocation as a way to allocate some of these funds. So in total, we received, or will receive, because some we've not received, all of them, about $55.9 million. And again, reiterating the expiration date for some of these, the bulk, the biggest chunk, that 34 million, that's the very first line item there, will expire December 30th of this year. We've not received any word that this date will be extended. So as far as we're concerned, we're still planning for that date. And so we've been pretty busy just focusing on those, that first $34 million. And then, right beneath that, the second table here is a recap of what we've spent of that 34 million or what we've committed. So of the 34, as of September 29th, just a couple, just a couple of days ago, we were at about 20, almost $30 million that had been spoken for. And please keep in mind that some of these items, they're still commitments, and so they still have to go through the process. So that 20, that 30, 29.7 million may change slightly depending upon when we finally order something and how much we receive. And then recently, in the last few days, now that we may be planning for some additional onsite activities, we are having to quickly relook at what other items we may need to be able to make that transition. So and then there's been some other items that recently were brought to our attention that we needed to make, expand that investment. And some of the, I didn't list all of them, but I listed a few of them for you. For example, we have a need for additional Chromebooks. We're not quite yet on a one-to-one device system district-wide. We're getting there. And you know, there's been a shortage because all over the country, other districts are also ordering Chromebooks. So we're still in the pipeline to get additional ones. And then we know that we have a need for additional hotspots. So we're also in the queue for that. And we're going to be expanding our contract with Comcast, and still waiting for some information on what that cost will look like. And you heard earlier about our partnerships with some of our community-based organizations that we'll be investing in as well. And then just some identification of software, and then items for our onsite instruction slash activities, such as, you know, some more dividers or additional disinfectants and additional types of equipment, so that we make sure that social distancing is being practiced and we're mitigating any kind of, you know, spread of 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 the virus. And so we we just kind of quickly looked at this number and just within the last couple of days, and we're anticipating roughly an additional two and a half million. And again, we're still trying to tighten up that number, and we'll bring more information to you. So back to that 34 million, so combining the 29.7 that's already spoken for, and then these new needs that we just identified, we have remaining about 1.8 to be allocated. And we were not quick to hurry up and allocate everything right away, because we didn't know what our environment was going to look like. And we needed to wait and see, you know, if there were additional needs. But at this point in time, for the funds that are expiring 12/30, we have 1.8 that, you know, we still have to, you know, decide how we're going to be using in these next couple of months. And we have to make decisions pretty quickly, because as you know, things take quite a bit of time to be ordered. Or a service, you know, it does take time to set up an agreement and get the service in place. And then, you know, with these funds, in order for them to qualify, to be billed under this item, this this allocation, we have to have the service provided by December 30th, or the product on hand by December 30th. And then all of the other funds up there will wait and see what the plan is, because maybe by then we'll know that we're back to full instruction completely. And that may present a whole other array of needs. So we don't want to quickly spend those down to to before we know what our future is going to look like. And as you see in that top table, we have a little bit of time with the additional funds. About 17, 18 million of those are not going to expire until 22. And then there's another three and a half million that will expire at the end of June 21. So we'll be making plans for that once we we come into the month of January, and we'll be sharing that information with you. So the next slide is just a quick, I'm not going to read all these line for line. There's a lot of information in here, and it was included in the board packet. But just to kind of go over the allowable uses quickly at a high level for the two different categories of funding, they they pretty much are very similar in 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 the allowable uses. This is the learning loss mitigation funding that had three separate pots of money. It was also the the funding that's tied to that $34 million. And so this is to address, again, the learning loss that was associated with the closure of schools and some details there for you. Other ideas were to extend the instructional year by making adjustments to the calendar, increasing minutes per day. And again, these are all in the in the packet, additional details. And then for our public, these are available on the CDE website as well. You can find a lot of great information on uses and FAQs as well. Next slide, please. And the other two bullets are to provide additional services for students to close some of the the gaps of like, you know, tutoring, devices, internet service, and which we're doing all of that, of course. And then any other kind of support that students need, like counseling, health services, professional development opportunities for our teachers and our parents to assist them with this, you know, distance learning environment that they're finding themselves in, and also access to food. You heard a lot of discussion about that, and we've been really expanding that service. And what we've been doing there, and not just the food investment that we've been making, but we've been providing our nutrition department with additional equipment that they need to make sure that they are also practicing social distancing and and that, you know, it's not interfering with their ability to keep up with the volume. And then any other kind of services or programs out there to address social emotional, you know, issues. And the next slide, please. And then on the SIR funds, these are the funds that were, the allocation methodology that was used was similar to the Title I. But it doesn't necessarily mean that those funds have to be used just for Title I schools or for Title I activities. Of course, that's the first allowable use of SIR funds, that they can mirror those similar activities. But in addition to that, these funds are are also to mitigate the impact of of COVID-19. And and then the other item on here, the second bullet, is that, you know, to provide our instructional leaders with the resources that they need to address the needs of their particular schools. And then finally, of course, we can focus on just the needs of our our low-income students, students with disabilities, English learners, any other students that, you know, that are experiencing other issues like homelessness, our foster care. And this would include outreach, service delivery, and any other needs that that needs to be addressed for these particular populations. Next slide, please. Some additional items here to develop and implement procedures to improve our response efforts, to also plan for coordinating the long-term closures, should we find ourselves in that situation, which we did. We've been closed since mid-March, and we invested quite a bit of money on distance learning. And then, then to provide meals. So it mirrors pretty much the learning loss mitigation funds. And then finally, again, staff training and professional development, not just on a distance learning, but also for our classified staff and all of our staff, actually, on the sanitation efforts, and then on minimizing the spread of any infectious disease. And we've invested quite a bit in this area as well. Next slide, please. And then similar items, purchasing supplies to sanitize and clean, purchasing educational technology, which would include hardware, software, connectivity for students, and also for for our instructional staff and for all populations. And then again, mental health services and supports. Next slide, please. And then we did this, our first bullet was the summer learning. We did use some of our funds for this. And then discretionary funds, again, for our site administrators to address the needs of their schools. And then any other item that we need in order to continue providing service and then to continue employing our existing staff. But you'll see, there's a lot of, you know, there's a little bit of duplication from both of the the funding sources. But that's meant to be the case, just to make sure that we don't miss anything, or that we're not restricted in one particular area. So they're broad enough, but they're narrow enough. However, it's important to note that, in addition to that, we are still reminded quite regularly that these funds and the spending of these funds will be subject to audit, just like our other federal resources. And then, of course, our our own audit team will audit the use of these funds as well. So we're being very conscientious and documenting all of our expenditures and making sure that, you know, we're following the same process that we do with all of our other expenditures and in consulting with our fiscal advisor. Next slide, please. And then these are our reporting schedules. This is the reporting schedule that's on the CDE website for these funds. And just to note that we just completed our first report, which was due on September 14th. And that was just for one of the the categories of funding. Our next reporting cycle, which is due October 7th, just right around the corner, will include a reporting on all of the funding sources. And so staff is working on that now. And you'll see, we have regular reporting cycles up until, you know, October of 21. And we have to report on how we spent the money, what categories. It's a pretty involved report. So there is a lot of accountability with the use of these funds and and, you know, rightly so, to make sure that it goes for the purposes that are that are intended. Next slide, please. And then that concludes the presentation in terms of giving you an overview on where we are with our our spending and and the remaining funds for that first part and the uses. And then at this point, I will turn it over to you, Board Members, to discuss your suggestions or ideas for future investments.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. President Ryan, if I could just interject very quickly here, I know that because of your roles as board members, Ms. Ramos has outlined sort of where we are in terms of making appropriate uses of some of these resources, along with the timelines for the period that that we have to make some of these expenditures. We wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to provide some discussion and some feedback to us on areas that, as you are also engaged in conversations with families and students across the district, that we also had an opportunity to hear some of that feedback from you directly. We will continue to look to see where we might still have some expenditures for resources that we do need to spend by December 30th. And that is sort of the the context under which we want the board to 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 provide some feedback based on requests that that have been made to you by students and families for areas that we might not have full capacity or full ability to respond in such a short period of time. So we do want to make sure that you, as a board, have the opportunity to to provide some of that feedback.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do. We have one live comment from Terrence Gladney and seven written comments.
Good evening again, everyone. I I think this question is probably more so for Superintendent Aguilar and and Rose Ramos. I've raised a question at our last bond oversight committee to Ms. Ramos about the expenditure of these one-time funds on Chromebooks, when in fact, they could be an allowable expense under bond funds. At that time, she clarified that if spending went above the threshold for the funds that needed to be spent by December, the funds could be reassigned to bond dollars, which I think would be more prudent, given that, again, our facilities are now the homes of our students, and that's a priority. I looked back at an email that I was going to send to you guys from the September 3rd meeting. And I believe that at that time, the CARES funds expenditure were above the 34 million, because I see in my notes that I was going to say, hey, now that they're above 35 million, are we going to redirect those funds back to bond dollars? But now I see that the funds are under 34 million. So if I could get clarification on that, number one. Number two, again, being that our students' homes are now our facilities, we've done a great job, I think, of focusing on connectivity, which I think is equivalent to getting students in the doors of our schools. Although I do know from the 17th of September meeting, Board Member Garcia asked to have a more prominent presence of the connectivity and hotspot availability for our families. But I don't think that that's happened. I looked as soon as an hour ago. But are we doing such a great job or an equal push to look at things like enriching the homes of these students for learning, right? You know, when we get them in the doors of our schools, we know that, okay, we have them in our presence, and we can look at the other impacts that are affecting them, you know? Socioeconomics, nutrition, psychology. Are we looking at things like the ergonomics of the space that they're learning in? You know, do they need a desk, a chair, a table, even an external mouse or monitor? You know, we have tons of those that are sitting in our physical spaces that are not being used right now. You know, we have tons of those that are sitting in our physical spaces that are not being used right now. I also saw recently a student, I assume, coming from the Cal, you know, Cal Middle or some nearby nutrition site, manually pushing a Lime scooter that obviously she had not paid for with a lunch bag in her hand to transport herself from the lunch site home. And I'm assuming she's probably in the in the neighborhood of Lea Tato Floyd. I don't know, but she was manually pushing a scooter. So if we have these dollars available, are we doing things like also investing in transportation options to make sure our students can safely, number one, get to these sites, since we removed buses a long time ago? But also for parents that are sitting at home with students that their IP says they have, they need a one-on-one aid, parents are sitting there. Can we provide stipend to these parents who are having to sacrifice some of their own investment, their time in their own profession and careers? I mean, because we're paying service providers to sit on a Zoom and calling that a one-on-one aid for special needs students. But yet the parents are sacrificing some of their, potentially sacrificing some of their income and time to actually do the work that we're paying providers for.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Gladney. I took notes. I do think that I would like to ask Ms. Rose to answer the first question related to the expenditures piece. And then we will follow up on the additional questions in the second part of your question. But I do think that the first one is very relevant.
Yes, yes, good question. The last time that we submitted a report on what we were proposing to spend and what we had spent to date, there was one item, a very large ticket item that was on the list under the facility component. It was for the HEPA filters that we were estimating at to cost roughly $20 million. And that was very early on, when we were doing our research to find out what was the best item that we could purchase to clean air and clear and pro bacteria in classrooms. And that was very expensive. And so staff did go back and did additional research and talk to other districts to find out, are there alternatives that are equally as good or even better and less expensive? And they did find another product, another item. So that is what has replaced that. And that replacement will now has now been reduced to $6.5 million from the $20 million. So that was a big savings. And then since then, we've had additional expenses that have come up. And so we'll plan to provide another updated detailed list. We provided one last month, and we agreed to provide one on a monthly basis. And so at the end of this month, which would be at the end of September, we'll bring one back to you guys at the next October meeting, when we can get that information all tabulated for you. So, yeah, so that was the biggest change, was the HEPA filters that were instead of buying the $20 million, we're now down to 6.2 million on our filters, which do just as good of a job. And staff is saying a little bit better. I have a note here from staff that this one also addresses the wildfire smoke. That was a request last time, and this one definitely takes care of that. And we have Mr. Browning available, in case you want any specific information on that particular new filter that his staff identified.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
And we're going to go ahead and continue with our public comments.
Okay, the next public comment is from Jen Beckman and says, I am in support of this initiative to help mental health for kids. And the next comment is from Liliana Zebly and says, I support funding for peer support programs. And the next comment is from Evelyn Woodman and says, money would be better spent providing teachers PPE and adding aids on a temporary basis to open schools and not spend $200, $250,000 on a program to teach kids what to tell other kids, what to do or say in event someone is depressed. They are depressed because they are not in school. So when Sac County gets into the red zone, be prepared not reactive to getting schools ready to open. The next comment is from Sue Cham and says, why is SCUSD pushing for reopening schools before the second wave of this pandemic with the probability of a twin-demic and trending rise in R factor as we approach flu season? What is your plan for addressing outdated ventilation systems in order for all staff and students to return safely? And what portion of the 50 million COVID relief funds will be used toward that goal? Thank you. Next comment is from Hillary Borelli and says, there are recommendations for air filter, for air filtration before schools open. Is SCUSD testing all HVAC systems at all sites? My child has been in portables that had HVAC issues, and the units are old. Is SCUSD testing for air changes per hour? My son has two autoimmune diseases, and it is important for me to know that he will return to as safe environment as possible. Will parents be informed if there are any students sick in their classroom slash pod? Your return to learn said that one or two staff would be with the students. How will teachers get a lunch break slash bathroom break if there is only one adult in the pod? Will another adult come to relieve them? The next comment is from Allison French-Toubot and says, I am speaking in support of Member Murawski's proposal to fund and develop a youth peer mental health training and support program with federal COVID funding. The mental health and SEL supports we had for students before the pandemic were not sufficient, and they are not sufficient now. I see that public advocates and ACLU are calling for all California districts to, quote, have school counselors, social workers, and psychologists affirmatively reach out to all students to check in on their mental health through the phone and internet platforms, unquote. And that needs to happen in SCUSD by using federal COVID funding to access more resources instead of adding to the to-do list of existing staff. And the last comment is from Nina Moore Weathers and says, hello, SCUSD Board of Education. My name is Nina Moore Weathers, and I am writing on behalf of Youth Forward, a local Sacramento nonprofit organization dedicated to reversing youth criminalization and disinvestment from schools and youth services. Youth Forward supports the proposal by Lisa Murawski to use some of the federal relief funds on the youth peer mental health training program and the virtual enrichment program called, quote, Pass to Class, unquote. Enrichment programs like Pass to Class, that focus on uplifting and motivating our youth, allow them not only to be encouraged to become the leaders we know they can be, but also process the difficult emotions that can come with living through unprecedented times such as these. Peer mental health training programs are able to take this idea one step further by giving youth the agency to help others experiencing mental health issues and learn more about the youth communities they participate in. Supporting this proposal is to support not only youth mental wellness, but overall community safety. Thank you. And that's the final public comment.
Thank you, and I appreciate you reading through all of our public comments tonight, as you have been recently. So we're going to take board member comments and questions at this time. I do know that we had a couple questions that came from public commenters related to our HVAC upgrades. This was a topic of conversation that we focused on a few board meetings ago. But I do think it would be helpful to have Mr. Browning, since we have him on the call, addressing both what we're looking at in terms of an HVAC upgrade to address particulate matter and ensuring safety through a return to school, and also the timeline that we're working with. Superintendent Aguilar, did we lose Mr. Browning?
Let me check. Yes.
Okay, well, we can go back if he returns. Okay, so other board member comments and questions? Board Member Murawski.
No one else want to go? Okay. So thank you, President Ryan. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ramos, for putting all of this together for us. I appreciate the the updates and the transparency about, you know, what's being, what's being funded with these federal dollars. And I look forward to also, you know, seeing seeing the updates for next next board meeting as to where we're at. I did have a couple, as you can probably tell from the public comments, I have been talking to folks in my community about a couple of ideas about things that we can do for students, if there is any, if there were to be any dollars remaining to be allocated. I just wanted to confirm something first, and that is, I think we we talked about, I believe, at the last board meeting, it was about the funding for professional development and whether that would be allocated to the, because it was, it was quite a decent dollar amount, whether that would be allocated to the coronavirus relief fund or or to something else.
Yes.
If you can address that.
Yes, and we did set aside funds for that, for the two-day professional development to be paid for specifically out of this, the the pot that would be expiring December 30. However, because those that that those that those wages will be earned over the year and not earned all by December 30, we're not going to be able to charge 100% of that to the first pot. But we can spread it out over the other CARES funds, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, no, that definitely makes sense. Okay, yeah, okay, that's that's great. I wanted to verify that from last time. So I just briefly then want to share, I guess, with the board. And I'd love to hear, you know, your comments about other other things that you that you have heard out there as priorities. One of the, you know, one of the things that I've heard loud and clear is from our students and how big a priority student mental health is to them. Another another way that I've looked at this is students, you know, even even if there are resources available, which there are in our community, which there are many times in our schools, sometimes students don't even know that there is a student support center at their very own school and what the student support center does, and that they have access to, you know, a staff person, or they can call a crisis line, or, you know, or even just how to recognize the signs of a mental health problem. So in some of the community groups I've been working with, as well as city staff, you know, we've been talking a lot about, like, how to really engage youth in mental health. And so this, the one proposal I have is to address this through kind of the development of a peer mental health training program, which would be kind of a work-based learning experience for for our students. And this this would seek to engage about 150 of our youth throughout our system to support the the individual students and also to educate their peers and reduce stigma around mental health. So this would be a one-time investment. I know there's lots of ways to support mental health. I think it's important that are, that we all understand and our community understand that we cannot do things like hire staff with these one-time dollars. These are one-time dollars expiring at the end of the year. So, you know, I've been, I've been trying to think about, okay, if we have this one opportunity, you know, to do some, to do something, what can we do kind of to support our our students? So another reason I really think think this is necessary is it, the data show that our students don't know where to go. And if they do reach out, they'll reach out to their peers. So I'm I'm pretty excited about, you know, bringing forward this proposal and would love to hear any feedback about that. The other, the other proposal I have is for a kind of a, it's a distance learning solution for a program that that Ms. T. Sandifer, who any of you know, know of Ms. T., she does a lot of work in our schools and with our students. So she she teaches dance, but really teaches kind of life skills, motivation, and engagement in social emotional learning through dances is kind of how she puts it. And so she has, you know, served a lot of our students over the years through her, through her classes, definitely in my, in my area at Cal and Lea Tato Floyd and others. So she has an online version of this of this Pass to Class, she calls it. So you can access, all of our students would be able to access kind of as an enrichment option, hours and hours of dance videos, kind of motivation. Our teachers and after-school providers would be able to access these as, you know, something they could either do, you know, outside, or you can, you could do at home as kind of brain breaks from distance learning. And so it's got a lot of really, really neat aspects to it. They have, it's been really, really well-received across other districts who have who have done it. So it's not, that's the first, the first peer support proposal, the budget for about 150 kids was about $280,000. This Pass to Class program, the estimate is about $75,000. So just to give you a sense of kind of what the the range of budget is for those. So those are kind of a couple of things that I would put forward as suggestions for how we could better serve our students during during this really difficult time.
I appreciate those thoughtful proposals. Member Murawski, I think that that would represent about 22% of the total budget that we have. So it looks like we're looking at $1.8 million that is unallocated after the items that Ms. Ramos ran through today. Certainly, I have some concerns and supports that I would like to see provided around learning loss mitigation, additional tutorials, and would love to talk about that in more detail, because I think even the partnership with Sac State is insufficient to truly meet the needs for additional one-on-one support around academics for some of our neediest students. But I absolutely support the peer-to-peer mental health and and look forward to figuring out a way that we can move that forward. What I'm going to suggest is, now that we have a number, which is $1.8 million that is unallocated, I think it would make sense, Superintendent, for us to schedule some to-buys with our board members so that we can figure out how best to, as a board, influence those expenditures. I think Member Murawski already has two proposals that she wants to lift up. There have been a couple other things that we've discussed, including the potential of stipending our low-wage nutrition services workers for the hazard that they have engaged in and serving our students day in, day out. We had some grant monies to provide that in the past, but certainly we would love to be able to do more. I also do just want to ask, since we have Nathaniel on the line now, for Nathaniel to respond to the question around HVAC. And then I have a question that I would like you to respond to on another matter.
Yeah, so I believe the question was in relation to the air purifier, portable air purifiers that the district is working to purchase now in relation to the HEPA option. So we originally were looking at the HEPA filtration option because it is able to purify the air down to 3/10 of a micron. We were able, we had some concerns around that, however, because of the ampage usage of those units and the potential need to upgrade the ampage at all of our school sites. We found another option. It's an air purification process that has multiple layers of filtration plus a UVC light bulb in there as well. It also filters down to 3/10 of a micron, just the same as the HEPA filtration does as well, at a fraction of a cost. And it only uses, actually, it's less than one ampere per unit as well. So it doesn't have the electrical draw that the HEPA option does. So we're in the process of ordering 6,000 of those units for every classroom and common space throughout the district. The only exception would be the CERNIS Center, because we have, we can install the UVC option within the current filter units that are on top of the building now. But those units would be able to purify up to 1,000 square feet and and adequately clean and filter that air. Additionally, maintenance is cheaper, and we have less concerns around replacing the filters, because the UVC light burns off the coronavirus. So rather than having our technicians go out and and have to worry about removing HEPA filters that have filters that have the virus potentially contained within it, we don't have to worry about that.
After Browning, how quickly do we believe, once we have procured, the installation could occur?
Once we have a PO in place to provide to the company that's providing those, we can start getting those within the next month and a half to two months, start rolling in and dispersed out to sites right away.
So, though in theory, to be able to provide the filtration upgrades to all 70-plus of our school sites, we're really talking about it will be end of year before that work is completed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I think it's helpful, Nathaniel, to have that timeline. Other board member comments and questions? Okay, I have my second question, and then I know we're behind, and we can move on to the next item. I have been hearing from many teachers in the district that they are struggling with technology and the technology support that they need. I know that that was touched upon somewhat in our return-to-school presentation, and also lightly touched upon in our budget expenditures. But, you know, what are we doing, Superintendent, to figure out a way to deploy in real time for both teachers and families, a tech SWAT team, if you will, that can help ensure that we are not losing precious time for learning, because we are struggling with just the technological capacity for both our teachers and our families?
Thank you, and I'll certainly, this is a topic that Mr. Turkey touched on a little bit, and our Deputy Superintendent Lisa Allen has also been focused on, given particularly the fact, board members, that, as you know, we do have a vacancy in our CIO role. We are very close to bringing in a consultant to support us, and make sure that we are doing everything that we can to provide those real-time supports. We do have a team of staff that we are able to deploy in instances where, as we experienced on the first days of our distance learning journey, we had several areas throughout the district where we had some difficulties with internet connectivity through different service providers. But this is an area that we are continuing to improve upon. At this time, we do think that we will benefit from bringing in additional supports through this consultant that we are close to bringing onboard. And then I'll let Deputy Superintendent Allen describe a little bit of the supports that we are currently providing through IT.
I've been working very closely with our IT department, and Ms. Rhodey and Mr. Vincent Flores, who helps to run these board meetings. But we also have additional vacancies in the department that we are trying to fill currently, which will help the situation. But I speak a lot with Ms. Rhodey regarding our texts, and what we can do and cannot do with our texts, and the support for teachers, as well as site support, because some teachers are teaching from their classrooms. So it is an issue. We have a very small but mighty staff that we are working very intimately with in order to create what you're describing, President Ryan, is like a, almost like a technical team that is going out to support our site. So it's still a work in progress, and we are feverishly working to ensure that we have additional supports for our sites and for our staff and students as well.
So Deputy Superintendent Allen, I really appreciate the work that you're putting in, and I know that we are, you know, greatly understaffed in our IT department. But I have to tell you, this is such a source of stress in the field for our teachers and our sites. And so, you know, while we figure out a contract, I feel like this has been a conversation we've been having for the last month, you know, what can we do to potentially bring in support that can work with our current employees, but are not employees that are short-term in nature? Because frankly, you know, I will say, I feel like this was a concern a month ago, it was a concern three weeks ago, it continues to be a concern, and the stress and burden it's placing upon our system is really just immeasurable.
Understood, but you have to also know that we have to work with our labor partners on this journey as well. So, and that may at times take time, but it is something that we're working through.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Superintendent. Can we get an update on this, just over the course of the next few days, so that we're not waiting till the next board meeting to have a sense that this has moved?
Yes, President Ryan, we'll do that. And I also want to make sure that we provide greater details to the board on the actual supports for teachers around technology usage as well. I know that Mr. Turkey provided a response to Member Pritchett, but I also think that it's important to lay out more concretely the specifics around those efforts as well. And so we'll include that as part of a board communication.
Thank you. So it looks like we're moving on to Item 7.3, approving Resolution Number 3168, recognition of the week of the school administrator.
Thank you, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. This is going to be presented by our two HR directors, Dr. Tiffany Smith-Simmons and Christina Vegas.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and board members. My name is Christina Vegas, and I'm here today with my colleague, Dr. Tiffany Smith-Simmons, to present here tonight Resolution Number 3168, that recognizes the week of the school administrators, taking place October 11th through October 17th. Next slide, please. Tonight's resolution is to recognize School Administrators Week. It is an opportunity for the district to recognize and acknowledge administrators who support students, staff, and community, and overall student support and their success. Next slide.
And good evening. I am Tiffany Smith-Simmons, and I would just like to share, without exception, our administrators touch and mold and mentor so many lives and have a lasting effect. And we've shared a few pictures of our administrators in action. Next slide. Thank you. That concludes our presentation this evening.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, President Ryan, we do have one public comment, and it's from Allison French-Toubau. And it says, "Thanks to the school principals who are striving to ensure functions and structures are in place to serve students and to inform parents. For example, my child attends the School of Engineering and Science, and I appreciate Principal Buttreiro and Vice Principal Bowman getting information and explanation about the revised grading policy out to parents, so that I knew what to expect heading into back-to-school night."
Wonderful, thank you. So this is a roll-call vote. Can we please go ahead and have Superintendent Aguilar call roll?
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Aye.
The motion carries. We want to thank our school administrators and all of the educators that support them for their extraordinary efforts in these unprecedented times. I cannot imagine what it must be like to lead in that capacity each and every day, but we are so grateful for your continued work. Item 8.0, public comment.
We have two live public comments and 15 written public comments. The first public commenter is Amanda Connolly.
Hello. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, Amanda, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, and everyone who is listening in. The reason why I wanted to speak today was I wanted to bring the public's attention to a SACB article dated August 26th of this year by Mr. Marcos Bretone, where he showed documentation that the top two SCTA leaders are in fact, at least in part, paid by our district, not to teach in a classroom, but for full-time union activities. So I find it a little confusing that the top two SCTA leaders, who like to talk about the bloat of our district, are in fact themselves paid by our district. I find it just a little hard to swallow. This deal was made in 1999. Things are a lot different today, and have been at several points, economically speaking, since 1999, but this is still the deal in place. And I have a problem with that. And I don't know if there's legal blockades to getting the public the information about negotiations, but I think there needs to be a game change. We need to know about the deals that are being negotiated, so we, as the public, have a chance to weigh in on whether we think they're good deals for we, the taxpayers, or bad deals for we, the taxpayers. I love our teachers, I do. And the fact that they have 100% of their healthcare premiums paid by the district, and $0 for their co-pays, you know, that's the deal they negotiated. And when I spoke to Nicole Malevsky once about the disparity between that deal and most of us in the private sector, I was met with defensiveness and a sense of entitlement instead of gratitude for the very generous deal that our teachers enjoy, where most of us, if not all of us, who are not SCTA members, don't have anywhere close to that good of a point. So that is my proposal, that we have some actual parent input before negotiations are signed. Also, I would like us to consider moving our summer break to the winter months to try and help prevent the spread of COVID and the flu, and maybe it would improve attendance during those months when so many people are out sick. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. Other question, other public comment?
Yes, our second live commenter is Terrence Gladney.
Thank you. I just want to say publicly that, you know, I think we all agree that our district will only move forward if we're honest and transparent. And there's been some things sort of like sitting on my heart and my mind, and as I said before, first of all, I don't think that it's an engaging process to require that people want a public comment, who want to provide public comment and submit them by noon, when if the meeting was in person, I would be able to walk up seconds before public comment opened. That doesn't seem like it's in the best interest of allowing people to engage in the meeting. So literally over the past few months, I have not been able to fit that within my schedule to accommodate you guys' policy. But, you know, I have a problem that we're saying that what happened in the spring is not distance learning. If we're being honest and saying that, okay, we failed, then we are. But I have multiple emails from the district from April, from March, from June, from May, asking about distance learning. On 6/9, there was a survey saying, "Tell us how you felt about distance learning." On 6/18, that survey closed and said, "Let us know your experience with distance learning." But when we find out that it failed, we want to revise the narrative. There's enough of that going on in other places, like in Washington, so let's be honest about how we are or are not serving our constituents, or our students, or our families. Okay? There are students who have been in IP meetings as recently as the last two days, who in their IP meetings have been reported that they're 100% attending. And they have not attended Zooms, have not intended asynchronous learning, but yet the report that's part of this greater report is saying that they are there 100%, when I know the parents have not, they have intentionally not sent their kids to a Zoom meeting or any session, because they are not receiving the services that they provide. And they're both special needs students, by the way. We're failing our special needs students, we have historically, we're failing our black and brown students, we're failing the kids who are providing the district extra money as unduplicated pupils, but yet because of social pressure, now we want to publicly acknowledge it. This has been going on for years, been going on from when I was in PTA, it's been going on with previous boards. I know that you guys didn't create all of the problems, but until we face what they actually are, we're not going to address them. So let's be honest and look in the mirror, and when we fail, let's say we failed. I know we like to talk about the great things, and there are a lot of great things, but, you know, there are a lot of kids who don't have time to wait for you guys to talk about the great things happening, because they're going through hell right now. Thank you.
We have the written public comments, and the first one is from Jennifer Clemmons, and it says, "I'm a teacher at Arthur A. Benjamin Health Professions High School, and I'm concerned about the district's lack of support for our CTE program. HPHS is a small learning community with a healthcare theme. I teach the Sacramento City College courses during zero period as an additional class added to my regular teaching load. Students get college credit for this class since they are enrolled in the college class. However, the district has refused to fund the point-to-FTE position in order for me to teach it. It is my understanding that the district funds a full-time 1.0 FTE position to other large high school CTE programs. Our small school is not getting the support we need to offer the program that we promised our students and parents. I would like to see the district offer funding in order for me to teach this class. Thank you." And the next comment is from Winter Saldana, and says, "Hello and good evening. My name is Winter Saldana. I am a sophomore at Arthur A. Benjamin Health Professions High School. I am here to address the current problem at our school for our zero period. It is said that the SUSD Board of Education will not be funding this year's zero period for HPHS. I assume it is because of the lack of money the board has to offer. If that is so, then I suggest that we hold a fundraiser for the class. Kids can go from house to house, wearing a mask and staying six feet away from the door, and hand out a flyer saying how to virtually support these young students, trying their best to succeed in high school. I really support this idea, because it puts the class into the students' hands, and gives the students an opportunity to reach out into the community and ask for support that me and my fellow students will someday be serving. This can be a simple process or a difficult one, depending on how far the board is willing to take this. I came to this school to get ahead of my education and was eager to learn at this specific school, not only because it is in the medical field, but also because of the zero-period classes it has to offer. Yes, there are other schools that have zero periods, but not one that is built for the medical field. My dream is to become a clinical pediatrician. All of my teachers at this school know that, and fully support me and want to help me in every way they can in reaching that goal. To me, this class is helping me reach that dream, that goal sooner than other students would. I would be a doctor sooner than most, and out on the field sooner than most. Yes, this is thinking out into the future, but my future of becoming a clinical pediatrician started freshman year, if not sooner. My grades in high school and the classes that I take in high school will affect the kind of college I will be able to attend. If this is something the board is not capable of doing, please consider the students' education and the dedication they are willing to put into it." And the next comment is from Amy Best Fong, and says, "My child is a junior, and after years of school avoidance, he is now excited about starting college, and having this period gives him this chance. We have to catch these kids now, so they can feel empowered to continue their education. And it is a class that, in his area of interest, medical sciences. Now more than ever, we need folks going into this field of study. Thank you." The next comment is from Carly Ransom, and says, "I am a very active parent to an 11th grade young lady with interest in medicine. The zero-period medical terminology course is a huge asset to my child's education. Parents and students were guaranteed this additional course, though the fact that nobody seems to have information..." Though the fact that nobody seems to have information if the class will move forward is a bit concerning. This situation prompts me to voice my concerns to the school superintendent as well as the school board. I do not hold back when it comes to academic needs being met for my child. So voicing frustration to those of higher power gets results. That's what I'll do. Those who have the capacity of using their status as a platform need to be better advocates for our children. Unacceptable. Respectfully, Ms. Ransom. The next comment is from Jasmine Tingle and says, I am commenting on behalf of the students and teacher at Health Professions High School who have had a college course where credits removed because the district has yet to approve the funding for the class. You cannot continue to preach about college and career-ready and contradict that very statement by not supporting this college course for the students. As I stated in several emails to board members, the support for these students and this class at this school should be non-negotiable. The district continues to mismanage money and not allocate funds where they are needed for our students. Please consider immediately funding this class for the students at Health Professions High School. And the next comment is from Janessa Stewart and says, good evening, SUSD Board members. I am the parent of a kindergarten student, an eighth grader here in the district. I would like to comment on the distance learning program and reopening schools plan. While I deeply admire and respect the great lengths our teachers and site staff have gone to make this distance learning experience as doable as possible, it is no substitute for live in-person instruction on campus. My eighth grader has been struggling. He's an extrovert and needs his peers. Being in front of a screen all day by himself with enough to manage in Google Classroom as some college classes is simply far too much to expect of a child that age. It is also incredibly lonely and depressing. Your virtual calming room is a poor substitute for real in, for real time in the flesh with one's peers and teachers. I spent the last week sitting alone, sitting alongside him for all his classes. And even as someone who has worked remotely myself for six years, it was too much for me to process properly without lots of focus and reviewing of materials slash emails slash messages slash to-dos, et cetera. Additionally, I have my kinder child who needs constant monitoring and assistance with her school day as well as this is her first time ever, ever having used a computer at all. I myself am using leave time to make this happen and ensure our children are getting the attention and supervision they need. But what about the families who don't have that option? What happens when our leave time runs out? If distance learning is still happening and my leave time is used up, I will have no choice but to quit my job. I know how much we are struggling with this way of learning, so I worry greatly for those families out there who don't have the option or ability to provide one-on-one support to their students or those who are English learners or on, or are special education students or those being looked after by grandparents who not, may not be as tech savvy. And the next comment is from Andrea Edwards and says, as a parent of an HPHS student, I am asking the board and superintendent to take swift action in reinstating the zero-period college course offered at the school. We are in week five of instruction and students have not received any instruction due to budget concerns. How is this class not funded? One reason our family selected this school is because students are able to earn college credit in high school. To learn that this opportunity may be taken away from them is contradictory of inequity of any equity statements made by the district. The next commenter is Caroline Nacella and says, as a new SUSD, I am commenting in hopes that the stakeholders can figure out a way to get the younger children back into the room safely. Our teachers are doing an incredible job, but SUSD's youngest children would benefit immensely for being with their peers. I also hope that the district will prioritize regular testing of all students and teachers. And the next comment is from Becky Bell. And it says, I'm both a district employee and a parent of an SUSD student. I'd love to have my daughter back at school and I'd love to see the students as a whole. That being said, I have no idea how to, I have no idea how a hybrid schedule would work for the majority of families when it comes to childcare. If my daughter goes partial day, what do we do the rest of the day? My husband is also a district employee that isn't able to work from home and can't leave work to get her. Going two days a week would be just as bad. For those whose student is currently in a small pod with another family during DL, what if those students aren't on the same schedule? Then what? As parents that aren't able to work from home, we scrambled to figure out a plan for DL. I have no idea how we could make hybrid work unless there was feedback between parents and school sites on which kids need to be on the same schedule for childcare slash partial DL purposes. As someone that works at a school site, the idea of having that feedback from countless families would make for near impossible scheduling. I would also, I would, I also would fear for the safety of all school site staff. It is either safe for everyone to return to full day or it's not. Please don't rush into any decision. If we return, the numbers spike and we have to return to DL. Many will have already lost their child spot for childcare. And the next comment is from Tara Thronson and says, schools in Sacramento County will be eligible to offer in-person learning in two weeks. Will our leaders agree to a plan that safely allows an in-person option for those with the highest need? For those who distance learning isn't serving their child's needs or to allow caregivers to return to jobs that can't be done remotely? When will our decision-makers take steps to develop a collaborative relationship to serve the students of SUSD? The lack of collaboration, collaborative leadership is hurting the students in SUSD. We are the only district in California without a distance learning MOU. Families have already left the district. The driving factor for the many families that left my children's school was the desire to have an in-person learning option this school year. Our kids need a distance learning MOU. Our kids need safe in-person schooling options. Our kids need fiscal stability to avoid receivership. Our kids can't continue to wait. They need the adult decision-makers to work together now. And the next comment is from Nicole Gusterson and says, I have first grader Washington, Washington Elementary this year. As a parent, I'm frustrated. We are all in this together. We are a team made of parents, school parents, board members, teachers slash staff, staff members and unions. We all need to work together to, one, mending the hurt and mistrust of many years of disagreements between the teachers, teachers' union and the district. We need counseling prior to arbitration to build trust or we'll never be able to move forward in agreement. Two, finalize a distance learning plan ASAP so everyone is on the same page and same team, team kids, not district team, not teachers' team. Three, work together for our return-together plan. District and unions, unions should be meeting around the clock to figure out if we return, when we might return and how to do it safely for all. Four, avoid state takeover. Stop the financial bleeding and make our district financially stronger for the long run. I do ask that we lead by example and do as we ask our children. Work together with respect even if we disagree. Work hard to find the best solution to solve this problem. And even when times are hard, not give up. Set all egos aside and work together. Our question to ourselves when solving these issues should always be, how will this affect our children? Thank you. And the next comment is from Junior Goris and says, good evening Superintendent Aguilar, President Ryan and his team members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to present a comment tonight. As a parent with a child at MLK and an engaged member of my community, I believe each of you would agree that the safety of each and every single student is our number one priority. As we look forward to the day that our students can return to our beloved schools, for many a pillar in our community, I would like to highlight a particular unsafe situation at the MLK site. Our school shares our recess area with the city park. Often the site gets a lot of unwanted visitors. Dogs often run onto our site as our school kids are playing and it's a matter of time before a child gets bit. In addition, children can easily, quote, wander off, unquote, off the district's property, putting an immense deal of pressure on our parent volunteers who already work hard with limited resources to keep our children safe. We really need a fence to keep our kids in and unwanted visitors out. I respectfully request that the board, along with our representative, Mr. Wu, look into this situation and provide a fence to help keep our children safe. These are difficult times. These are different times and we need to constantly stay vigilant on how we can make our district better in every capacity. The thought of an avoidable injury as a dog bite because of lack of a fence is common sense solution. I ask the board and the district humbly for your allegiance to this matter. As always, thank you for your labor for our children. And the next comment is from Daniel Conway and says, as a parent of four students in the district, it's disheartening and disturbing to see how the needs of our children are being impacted by the discord at the district. While SAC City Unified has been a mess for many years, recent weeks have shown how voiceless and disenfranchised students and families are in determining the future of our schools. Furthermore, the lack of agreement around distance learning, responsibly returning to campus and how to avoid state takeover are why classroom teachers and principals seem to be increasingly vocal in their frustrations and why so many families are already fleeing the district. Yet the people empowered to address these issues are not changing their behaviors in the face of these multiple crises. Our district is in an unacceptable situation that has been created and compounded by adults. Those same adults must step up and prioritize the needs of our children first. Meanwhile, too little is being done to address the egregious inequities that exist in our district, most of which are only being amplified by this pandemic. No more excuses or explanations. We demand leadership and results. Our families are watching because our future is in your hands. And the next comment is from Joe Flores and says, members of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board, as a neighborhood leader in Southland Park, I stand with my neighbors of the Marshall New Era Neighborhood and amplify their calls urging SUSD to sell the old Marshall School property to the city of Sacramento. I understand that this action requires a unanimous vote by the SUSD Board to support this action. Please do so to create pathways for stakeholders to restore and activate this blind site. Thank you. And the last comment is from Daniel Conway Strategies and says, oh, excuse me, this one was repeated. I had already read this from Daniel Conway. So that is all of the public comments on this item.
Thank you. And so we're moving on to item 9.0, the public hearing and approval of the revised budget. Item 9.1, public hearing and approval of revised budget will be presented by Rose Ramos. This is actually a item not just for discussion, but also for action this evening. So Ms. Ramos?
President Ryan, if I can just, as we transition into this, I know that there were among public comments, concerns about health professions. I just want to make sure that our community knows that I am aware of the situation and I'm very hopeful that we will have a response very soon for some of our students and families. So I will certainly keep the board posted on that.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar.
Good evening again, President Ryan, the board member superintendent. Tonight, we are presenting again the proposed revised budget for the 2021 school year. Next slide, please. And the agenda will include the brief description on the purpose of the proposed revised budget and then the changes that are being proposed within the budget and then the impact on the multi-year projections. An opportunity for questions and answers. And then just so you all know, our next budget report will be first interim for this fiscal year and it will be presented at the October board meeting. And then we move into the actual public hearing to adopt the budget. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this revised adopted budget is because the district's 2021 adopted budget that was presented and approved in June was disapproved by the Sacramento County Office of Education. Due to our, in our projections, we did not have the ability to meet the 2% required reserve in all years. And also because of the projected negative cash balance that the district was possibly facing by June 30th of 2021. And so ED Code states that the district is then required to revise the budget and then present it by October 8th to the board and, and for adoption and then submit it to SCOE. And we know since then, there have been many changes to the budget due to the state taking action on their budget that impacted our revenue as well and then some other changes the district did implement. And that's what I will be presenting to you tonight. Next slide, please. So the last time we presented a budget to you was August 20th and that included budget revisions that we included from the state enacted budget because of course the state took action on the state budget after the district approved our 2021 budget. And so we knew that there were significant changes in the state enacted budget that we had to implement in our budget quickly in order to reflect a more accurate budget for this year and the multi-year projections. And namely, it was the COLA back in May revised, we were looking at a negative COLA and then we were also looking at some deferrals that were different. And so the state enacted budget revised those two items and that's what we presented to you August 20th. So the top table is the proposed revised budget that we are presenting tonight. And then the bottom table is the last budget that you've seen, just so you can compare and see those differences. And, and obviously I'm just going to go down to the, the main difference. There's lots of differences above, but this, the impact on our ending fund balance is pretty significant. You'll see that our proposed revised budget, if we look at just restrict unrestricted, we are projecting to end this year with an ending balance of $66.6 million. And, and the revised budget back in August had that ending balance projected at $24.7 million. So a pretty big swing, but we have to remember that what happened after August was that we closed the books and we knew we had quite a bit of savings and that bumped up our ending fund balance by about $20 million. So I'll go into that further, but I just wanted to clarify that that $40 million swing you're seeing here is not just all attributed to just this proposed revised budget. Next slide, please. So here's just a recap. So again, our proposed revised budget for the unrestricted ending, ending fund balance for this year, we're looking at about $66.6 million. And back in August, we were projecting about $24.30. So that's a difference of $42.30 million. Quite a big jump. And so in summary, which is the second table there, the first, about half of that is attributed to the change in our beginning fund balance for this year. Because again, we closed the books and we had a one-time savings due to closure of schools and several vacancies. And so we did, we did not spend as much. And so that first line, that 20.90 is a reflection of the prior year savings. And so that gets rolled over into this year and, and it changes our beginning fund balance that, you know, we thought we were going to end, start with a little less money, but it, you know, it ended up being a bump of $20.90 million. And so in this budget, the proposed revised budget, we are now proposing to revise this budget by $21.40 million. So in total, we're looking to improve the ending fund balance or projecting to improve the ending fund balance for this year by $42.30 million. Next slide, please. And here we go into the details of what makes up that, that new proposed savings of 21. So the first category is our unrestricted revenue. We had a gain here of $1 million and this was due to the charter oversight fee. Again, you know, over the summer, all of our agencies are closing their books. And in particular, charter oversight fee, it's a percentage of their LCFF revenue. So they have to complete their P2 report, which is done roughly in April. They have to close their books. And then we finally get their final report to see exactly how much funding they did end up for in the 1920 and that projects our funding going forward. And so there was a small bump there of about $1.1 million. And then we also had a slight adjustment in our P2 ADA report of about 115. So the net of those two is a $1 million increase to our unrestricted revenue. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And now here are the big reductions that we took in various categories of $15 million on the unrestricted side. So the first category is certificated salaries. And this is for vacancy savings. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a future slide. But this came out to about four and a half million. And this is made up of not just vacancy savings completely, 2.4 is vacancy savings. And then another 2.4 is for positions that we're able to maintain in the restricted resources. We have various supplemental positions throughout the district that are allowable to be charged to our restricted resources. But we know that those funds are limited. And so last year, we were projecting that it was going to be the final year that we would have funding available in our restricted resources to charge some of these supplemental salaries. But because we had the closures and we had some savings in our restricted resources, we were able to continue funding those positions out of our restricted resources. And then we had an increase in some department, they were adjusting their budgets. And so it bumped up some of the certificated salaries by about 260,000. So the net of all those three categories is about 4.5 million reduction in certificated salaries. The next item is the, is a reduction of 2.1 million in classified salaries. And again, there is a part of this is due to 2.9 million in vacancy savings. And then an increase of 750,000 for departments that are adjusting their budgets. They're not necessarily increasing the budget, they're moving around some of their resources within their budget. And then the third bullet is a decrease of 5.3 million for benefits. This is again, corresponds to some of the reductions in the two categories above. And then we did have an adjustment to our projected health benefit rate. When we were building the budget in the spring for the coming year, we were getting some preliminary rates from our carryover, excuse me, our carriers, our health carriers that were projecting that the rate, we were going to see double-digit increases in our health benefits because of the COVID-related illnesses. And so far, we're not seeing that yet just yet. So we were able to adjust that down a little bit and then shave off some of the projected increase in our health benefits by about $1 million. Next slide, please. And then continuing on with the expense changes. We did have an increase to our books and supplies of 833,000. And again, this is just movement within the budgets. Not necessarily an increase to the overall budget. And then the second bullet, we had a decrease of 3.2 million for services and operating expenses. What we did here was we did adjust our utility budgets by about $3 million for reduced usage. Couple of areas for this. One is that our rates are not going to be as high as we projected. And then we also applied a savings for these months that we are remaining closed. We know, we're not sure when we're going to open up. So this $3 million is projecting, part of it is projecting that we will not be using as much utilities for the remainder of this calendar year. So of course, if that changes, then we'll have to come back and adjust that budget. So we're just realizing the savings upfront. And then $200,000 for departments, again, adjusting their budget. And then the third bullet is we are adjusting down our capital outlay by 970,000. This was mostly in transportation, not expecting to spend as much on some of their items that they need for their department. And they're instead moving those resources to other categories. And then the fourth bullet is an increase of 1.1 million for our expense to our county office-operated programs. They provide some of the community day programs for our students. And then we have an increase here in our indirect costs because we know the spending on the restricted programs is expected to increase. All the funds that we did not spend in 1920 on our restricted programs with restricted resources, we're planning now, we carry that over and now we're planning to spend down those funds. And so of course, that increases the indirect cost that we can assign to those programs. Next slide, please. And then we are also projecting to have a lower contribution to our restricted programs by 5.4 million. And this is for special ed and an adjustment to routine restricted maintenance. But this isn't because we're projecting to reduce services to our special ed program. This is because, as you'll see when I get to the restricted explanations, we're also applying those same vacancy trends to the restricted side of the house. So as a restricted side of the house, expenses goes down. Those programs that require contributions, of course, those contributions go down as well. Next slide, please. And so in total, again, just to recap, just to kind of bring everyone back, what does this mean? So here's the 21.4 million summarized. 1 million is that unrestricted revenue that I just explained. And then 15 million is the unrestricted expenditures that we went through those two slides. And then a reduction in our contributions by 5.4 million. And so in total, that's 21.4 million that we are improving our budget by. Next slide, please. And now here's the restricted revenue and expenditure changes. For the revenue side, here are 21.8 million is for carryover from 1920, which includes a big chunk of this is the federal COVID-19 relief funds. And then the other main categories are our title programs, Title II, III, IV, our 21st Century SIG, ACES, and other local awards. Because, you know, again, we closed schools mid-March and so many of these programs and activities that were planned had to be postponed or, you know, they weren't able to occur. And so accordingly, then we also carried over those expenditures to the tune of 24.8 million. Next slide, please. And here are the restricted changes. So as I was describing earlier, the vacancy savings, we applied that also on the unrestricted, I mean, excuse me, restricted side. We're capturing savings of 2.9 million for our certified salaries and for classified, 944,000. And then the corresponding benefits of 2.6 million. And again, their health benefit rate was adjusted down for the same reason, as I explained earlier, that we adjusted our increase rate slightly lower. And then again, here is the carryover of 27 million that we have placed into books and supplies. And this is again, mainly for our COVID relief funds. And as we start to refine how we're spending this money, the COVID relief money, you'll see movement going into the other categories like services. But for COVID relief, since it's one-time, very little will move into our classified or certificated salaries because these are not ongoing funds. They may appear in some of the salary line items as one-time expenditures, maybe additional stipends or some per diems that are paid for one-time activities or professional development, but certainly not for ongoing salary improvements. And then, and so a big chunk of that, like I said, was for federal COVID relief funds and then also the other restricted resources. And then we applied 3.1 million in carryover for our Clean Energy Act award. And this is mostly in our capital outlay and services programs. And then, of course, the restricted side saw an increase to their indirect costs because they're increasing their expenditures. And so the unrestricted side, you know, charges the appropriate indirect rate to all these programs. Next slide, please. And so just again, to remind everyone of the vacancy trend analysis that we described in the last board meeting that the district is proposing to implement that, this this technique into our budget in order to realize our savings upfront versus waiting until the end of the year and say, oh, you know, we didn't fill X number of positions and this is the savings from that. We do now have enough information and we can go back several years and we've done that to say, okay, there is a little bit of a trend in some categories, not all, in some, that we are comfortable enough to propose to you that we employ this technique in order to reduce the liability on our budget and to improve our budget and to make our projections just tighten up a little bit better with our actuals. And this is something that we will be monitoring quite regularly. And I'll, you know, explain a little more in some future slides that are coming up here. So the impact of doing this is that this vacancy rate, it reduces the budgeted salaries and expenses by these amounts that I will be sharing with you. And then we'll monitor this at each interim reporting period, you know, we'll check in to see how is it trending? Is it on target? Are we, you know, did we shave off way too much? Or maybe not enough? And we'll be, you know, providing you with that updated information. Next slide, please. And so here is the table. It might be a little small. But so for the unrestricted side, we took both certificated and classified separately. So for certificated, we looked at all the vacancies throughout all of last year at different intervals. And we came up with those categories that have vacancies, you know, on a regular basis. There are some positions that, you know, have a vacancy maybe once a year or once every other year. And so those would not be included in the trend analysis, but those that you can see that, you know, have regular vacancies were part of this analysis. And then we took the percentage of those compared to what is authorized to come up with an annual average. And so for the top table, for our certificated side, on the unrestricted, we came up with an annual average of 1.8%. And so that was applied to the budget for these particular positions that are, you know, in our budget and along with their benefits. And so for the certificated in total, we came up with about 3.6 million that we will realize, that we're projecting to realize in vacancy savings for the year. So we built that into the budget now. We basically, you know, just put a negative amount against those items in the budget. And we did the same exercise for classified. And for classified, we came up with 5.1 million. And, you know, if there's, what kinds of positions are we finding here, if that's a question that may come up? For a classified, it's positions that are pretty typical in many districts, like our bus drivers, our noon duty, some of our part-time positions, like our instructional aides, clerks, a couple of custodians, plant managers. And then on the certificated side, the positions that we found to be, have this trend of vacancies were various teachers and not just classroom teachers, but we're talking also teachers, like our supplemental teachers, hard-to-fill positions. And so in total, on the unrestricted side, we built in a savings of 8.7 million now within this proposed budget. And then we're also building that into our multi-year projections. So it has that compounding impact of really, you know, saving money for the district upfront. You know, instead of waiting until the end of the year, we get a big swing and, you know, and it just appears that the district is over budgeting when really, all of these positions are authorized positions within the district. We just, you know, don't fill them from time to time. And we offset that with either substitutes or temporary contracts. Next slide, please. And so we did the same thing on the restricted side. And now on the restricted side, we found that the trend was more common for some of our special ed positions, which is, you know, to be expected, right? We struggle like other districts in filling some of these hard positions that are hard to fill, like speech pathologists and some of the specialized special ed teachers. And so we applied the same thing, did a look back to see what that trend was like and then applied an annual average. And so on the restricted side, we came up with a total for the certificated and the classified of about 5.6 million, which we took out of the budget as well. And then we applied that to our multi-year projections to also create that impact over, you know, the long run. And again, we'll come back and revisit and make adjustments as needed. Next slide, please. And so on the, on the multi-year projections, these are the assumptions that we use as of now. This is the information that we have for our revenues on unrestricted. For LCFF COLA, we are still anticipating 0%. We've not heard anything different. And then for our unrestricted expenditures over the next two years, we applied our step and column based on what, you know, our step and column movement is. And then we applied the STIRS and PERS increases for the rates that are out there and that are available at this point in time. For health benefits, we are projecting an 8% increase in the coming years. And, you know, again, that's based on our recent information that we got from our carriers. That may change. We don't know what that's going to look like after this year is over and, you know, claims start coming in. For utilities, again, we're basing it on information provided by our providers. And then for our increases in special ed education, we base this on our trend analysis and what we see that is increased, you know, what items are increasing for these services. And then, of course, we remove any one-time expenditures. We've had some textbook adoptions this year and we will have another one next year. And so these will be removed accordingly from the multi-year projections, or they were removed, I should say. So in our next slide, here's our multi-year projections, what they look like. So I'm just going to take you down to the ending fund balance. So because of these adjustments, you'll see that it really created an upswing in our ending fund balance all the way up to 66.6 million. And although that's not ongoing, right, it's, there's, some of these are one-time savings. But the impact of this is that it then increases our starting point for the next year. And so that, again, that has the impact of increasing the ending fund balance for the second year and so on, until the third year. And so what it's done is that it's allowed us now to meet our required reserve for two years. In our prior presentations and our prior projections, prior to us taking any of the vacancy savings or even realizing savings for the closures, we were struggling even in meeting our 2% our first year. So, I mean, you know, it's a negative thing, of course, that we've had to close schools and, you know, we've had some of the savings from that. But the impact on the budget is, as you will see it, that we're able to meet our reserve or projecting to meet our reserve for two years. And then in the third year, we still are projecting to be negative. So at least the district is, you know, starting to move in that direction. And if we can just address some of our deficit now or even in the second year, so that it has the impact of carrying forward to our third year, we just may, you know, find ourselves in a much better position and starting to turn our picture around and hopefully getting to that point of, you know, moving out of that negative status. So if we stay on this course and, you know, I'd like to maintain that positive tone. But we keep hearing that at the state level, you know, the economy may be worse than the year two. And if that, and if they pass on any of the state's distress on districts, it may just turn our picture around again, you know, we may find ourselves, you know, back to where we were last year. So, but right now, as of this point in time, with this information that we have, it looks like the district is starting to finally gain some movement in the right direction. And with a little bit more support to address some of our expenses, you know, we can possibly find ourselves out of this hole at some point. Next slide, please. And so our cash flow, we've updated our cash flow and we've included it for you. And again, we still have some cash challenges. We're not out of the woods yet. And now we're projecting that those will start in May because we've reduced our budget quite a bit. So we're not spending as much money. So we were able to push that out a little bit. And next slide, please. And so we do intend to pursue all short-term internal and external borrowing options. And we will apply for that state waiver. And this most likely getting one of these has been a postpone our cash crisis, you know, out another year, out into 2022. I can't say exactly how far. I mean, it depends on if we are eligible for the TRAN, the Temporary Revenue Anticipation Note, or how much of a state waiver we'll get will depend on how far out we can push our cash crisis. And yeah, that isn't resolving our issue, but it's certainly buying us time, time to find a solution, a more long-term solution to getting the district back on the right foot and to reduce our deficit spending. Even if we can't reduce it 100%, I mean, if we can reduce it partway, we just might be able to make that third year and get out of this situation. We have been talking with the statewide TRAN officials that are issuing a statewide TRAN. Terry Rylant, our fiscal advisor, and I had a meeting with them last week. And so we do have the district in the queue for being considered. And we will continue to share information with you on that. We have no more information other than, you know, we've expressed interest and have submitted our name and are waiting for additional information and analysis on that and what's expected of us in order for us to get a formal application in. So I'll certainly be sharing more information on that. Um, so I'll certainly be sharing more information on that. Um, next slide, please. And so um, in summary, um, yeah, we're still looking for a fiscal recovery plan, you know, so we can achieve um a a solution for um fiscal solvency. And we'll bring you more a a formalized a budget update um in in December. But we'll continue to share financial information with you um over these next few uh board meetings, certainly, especially with um, you know, the short-term borrowings that that, you know, may be available to us. And providing you with regular cash flow updates. And so that's pretty much, next slide, that concludes it and I will turn it over to back to you, board members for questions.
Thank you, Rose. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one public comment from Allison French-Tubau. And she says, in light of the nine fifteen twenty FICMAT reports commentary on position control, I am pleased to see on page eleven of the PDF or item nine point one, a vacancy trend analysis that shows there is a calculable percentage of authorized F T E that can be treated as vacancy savings. And that the amount shown is not pocket change, over eight point seven million for unrestricted and almost five point seven million for restricted. This is the kind of analysis that was missing in previous years and left S U S D fumbling to explain the difference between predicted and actual expenditures. So it's great to see C B O Ramos has succeeded in improving it in her first year. As I am commenting in advance, I hope that between the presentation and questions from board members, that we will hear of how the position control weaknesses identified by FICMAT can be addressed going forward. In the meantime, we still need more savings to end the structural deficit. And we need a new C B A for S C T A so that their members can stop pointing out that the daily rate for curriculum negotiated in twenty seventeen is low compared to minimum wage in twenty twenty. And I can stop pointing out that even state workers only get eighty percent of the cheapest family plan as a healthcare benefit. And that's the only public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti.
President Ryan, you muted yourself.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, we're going to take board member comments at this time. Again, as a reminder, we're about an hour and a half behind the agenda right now. So if we can keep our comments and questions brief, and I'll just take a show of hands. Board member Pritchett.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos, for that presentation. I will keep it very brief because we are very, we're really over time. Um, I, in in terms of um the uh state waivers, can you tell me if there's anything that would prevent us from being approved?
I don't, I I I don't have any more information, Member Pritchett. I'm sorry, we've been trying to, you know, see if we can get anything out from the state on that, but everyone's kind of waiting for that same information to be released, the process and the application. We just keep hearing that it's coming roughly late November, early December.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. Board Member Garcia.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, first, and you know, um, I want to thank Rose Ramos for always giving us very thorough presentations and information to just um make sure that we have the information that we need so that we can um be prepared for these meetings and ask questions and um and make the decisions that we need to make. Um, but you know, as I reflected and I and I in thinking about preparing for this meeting, and um as I started writing down my questions, um I realized that the answers that I got were not going to be satisfactory. Um, and I say that because um, when I think about my tenure on this board, it'll almost be two years. I have voted to approve two budgets, one revision with a hope that we'll make great strides in addressing our budget woes. And we haven't yet. Uh, we continue to approve and revise budgets that we know will get disapproved by the county superintendent. And this particular one is no different. Uh, we've heard from many experts that negotiated savings are a must in getting out of this um fiscal crisis. And I wholeheartedly believe that. Um, but I also know that it's not going to be enough. Uh, the um, so we need to figure out what we can do. I've asked many times for a fiscal recovery plan so that we can address that um that gap. And I'm still waiting. We haven't had that conversation. I know that any plan will include very difficult decisions. And we need to do them now. Uh, so, you know, when I asked myself, why do I continue to vote on on these um items? Knowing that the outcome's going to be the same, not going to change anything. We're still going to end up with a disapproved budget, still no plan to address the budget deficit. And I just, I just could no longer do it. Um, so I I can't, I can't support these um, the revisions to this budget because it's still not where we need to be. Um, I want to recognize there have been some strides, um, uh, progress. A lot of it came, um, unfortunately due to the pandemic and having to close down our schools and getting an infusion of one-time federal dollars. Um, I also want to have, um, want to make a request that um, that the superintendent and board president ask FICMAT, Mr. Fine or someone on his staff, to present that report that was referenced earlier in um in public comment. It's the SAC City Unified School District Management Letter dated uh September fifteenth. It includes about thirty recommendations for our districts in terms of what we can do outside of negotiations. Many of those recommendations are outside of negotiations. So I'm asking you to um, to schedule this presentation from FICMAT so that we can have that conversation um in the next few um board meetings, uh well before our first interim in December. Uh, so that we can again have a a conversation that we uh need to have. And we can expect a plan and make the difficult decisions that we need to make. If these deferrals and the exemption to the deferrals don't happen, we are in a whole lot of trouble way before the deferrals even take place. So um, so I just wanted to share those comments and um, and uh and just express why I will be voting no on these revisions. Thank you. And thank you for all the hard work to staff. I know a lot of it goes into it, so this is not personal.
We have other comments or questions from board members. Board member Murawski.
Thank you. Wanted to also um just thank Ms. Ramos and and the whole team uh for for the great presentation and the work that that goes into each one of these. Um, I wanted to thank you in particular for uh the work on doing the vacancy analysis. And um, I I really want to emphasize that um to our community as well because, you know, this is one thing that I've heard since I, since I, you know, before I was on the board um in talking to people is that every time when we get to the end of the year, SAC City, you know, their budget assumes too much spending and then every year it's revised down. And I think, you know, given these numbers from the vacancy savings analysis, I think a big chunk of that revision every year was likely due to vacancy savings. So I just, I really appreciate staff reflecting that. It seems like a very reasonable move. Um, there always is a little risk, um, you know, that that you're not budgeting, that you're, you know, under undercutting it. So I, I recognize that, but I think it's, you know, it's probably stable enough to to really um help this accuracy of our budget. So I I just appreciate that very much. Um, there are a couple, a couple of things. I would like to have a follow-up conversation, you know, more related to the fiscal recovery plan. I think that's, you know, we're in a different state right now in the, over the last few months. And I did, I do think we need to just revisit, you know, where we are, what we need to do. And so I I would uh, you know, welcome that as well. Um, there's a couple of things I just want to mention on the record that I would like to see in terms of um fiscal transparency. And these are not new things, so I just want to um, you know, bring them up again. We've had some discussions about these in the past. Um, one is the the books and supplies category. Um, I know that that's, you know, that's a kind of a catch-all. And we've, we've discussed even with our fiscal advisor, Terry Ryland, that that's a common way that school districts budget is to put, you know, um more items or more revenues in the books and supply line. And then they they kind of get meted out uh over the year. But I do think that we could use more, just more um transparency in the the explanation of what is in, what is in the books and supply line, why, and then maybe updates. I mean, I I'm willing to kind of have a conversation about how is the best way to ensure that that there is transparency around that line item, just because I think it's generated a lot of confusion. And sometimes it's, I mean, I think it's sort of a red herring um in that there's not like anything nefarious going on. It's just, you know, uh, it's just kind of a budgeting practice that's not well-understood and just, you know, easy to misconstrue. So I, I I really would like to see some, um, and we can, we can follow up and schedule something to maybe brainstorm about how to do that. But um, I think that's, that's something that I I would need to see. Um, the other part is special ed. Seven point seven million uh was, is the biggest increase, I think, in in all of the seven point four million year-over-year, the following year. Um, I, you know, we've talked about this a lot, like why? You know, I understand the trends are are that way, but what is making up those trends? Um, and I've been working closely with the Community Advisory Committee on Special Education Subcommittee uh of that group on um, on just ideas around coming up with a template on what what a a better kind of more robust budget budget presentation would look like to have some more programmatic and budget information on special education so we could really understand and the community can understand what's going on in that budget. Um, so I, I want to just say on the record um for the twenty-one twenty-two budget, I expect to have, you know, a more robust um special ed budget presentation as a supplemental um budget display. Um, and, you know, happy to and look forward to collaborating with staff on kind of what that looks like and make sure it's um, it's feasible for for staff to put together and all of that. Um, the final thing I'd mention is on just departmental budgets uh within, within the district office. We had talked about before having sort of one-pagers on just how to explain, you know, the different, the different departments in the district, who does what, what does the staffing and budget look like by department? And what are their, their different, um, you know, job duties that that fall under that? So I just think, you know, as we're talking about all these things, I think our community has high expectations of uh kind of transparency around how to explain some of these. Um, just, you know, what what we're spending money on. So I think that would be, that would be very welcome um as well. And sometime over, you know, in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Murawski. We have other questions or comments. Board Member Bing.
Thank you, President Ryan. Um, Ms. Ramos, I just want to say thank you so much for your presentation and your hard work and hard work. Um, I just have a question and also just some comments. Um, and I wanted some clarity uh for our uh multi-year projection. And I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading that right, um, that in the third year uh twenty twenty-one twenty-two, that we're just seven million away from meeting um what we need in order to to get out. Can you confirm that?
In the third year, uh, actually, the third year where we're in the negative, we're projecting a negative ending balance of um eighteen million. Um, that would be on slide seventeen.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, and so um, I guess I um I I have some similar concerns. Um, I think I I I shared many of the concerns, I think, that Member Garcia mentioned. I think over the past year, um, this board has voted to approve budget that we know that's going to be rejected by SCOWE, um, because we're not meeting the multi-year uh projection of the third year. So we revise, we um approve as a board, knowing that it's going to be disapproved again. Um, and I think like Member Garcia stated, um, this budget revision is really no different, um, even though we do have the one-time surplus because of COVID. Um, and, um, you know, I, I think for me, um, it's, it's going to be disapproved again. And I think as board members, we are all very aware of that. Um, I think also as a board, I think I've heard, um, some of my colleagues have asked for a plan of what we need to do outside of negotiation to address our ongoing deficit based on our multi-year projection, right? We've heard from uh Superintendent Gordon. Um, and I think our colleagues have asked him over and over again, you know, what is our only solution? Um, and we have heard, uh, you know, from from uh Superintendent Gordon, um, that negotiating savings is one of them. And um, I think I've also heard from my colleagues as well stating that negotiated solution is um, is our only way. Um, and I do want to acknowledge that negotiated savings are huge and significant. And we have to keep working and making sure that our labor partners, that we all come to the table to do this. Um, but I also want to point out um that FICMAC, you know, continues to share with our school district that even with negotiated savings, if we don't have substantial corrective action, that um, it's really likely that an emergency appropriation will be needed. Um, and I think Member Garcia did mention the thirty recommendation that FICMAC submitted mid-September. And, you know, some of these included some tangible, um, some tangible solutions like reviewing class size uh and making adjustment based on our C B A, which we haven't done, right? Um, or reviewing some independent charters that are actually running into deficits, um, like some tangible things that we could do right now. Um, and I feel like until we actually have a plan as a board and we act on it, even though we've made some strides of, because of the great work that you've done, Ms. Ramos, um, I feel like no one will come to the table unless as a board, we also act. Um, and so I want to take this time to also second Member Garcia's comments to, for her formal request to ask FICMAC to present their findings from their September letter to the district and to the public. Um, and I want to really encourage all of us, I think, to think about not just the negotiated savings, but um other alternatives as well in in um with the negotiated savings. Um, I, I, you know, I've heard from, you know, frustration from Member Pritchett, right? Several times that, gosh, as a school district, we've gone through so many reports. Um, and so I think it's not lost on me also, um, that we also know that we got to figure out how to keep healthcare benefits costs down, right? And I also just want to say that and put that on the record. Um, and um, I think like the rising cost of health benefits is an ongoing issue that I actually think I want to say to my board that it's something that we alone can't address. We can't do it alone. Um, I actually think, you know, as I've been sitting on this board for four years, that it's an issue that a lot of school districts are going to have to eventually face, right? And that we're not alone in this. Um, and what is really sad for me, um, as I reflect about my years here on the school board, is like ultimately, health insurance companies like Health Net, that's written into the contract, are literally making massive profits. Uh, while we as a board and as labor partners are like fighting, right? Who should sacrifice more, health benefits or student programs? And it's really sad for me because I feel like we're literally, we're literally prioritizing insurance profits over resources um and education of our students and the health of our s- our staff, you know? And I feel like this is something that not just our district is going through, but I fear that many school district across the state and across the U S will have to, have to face eventually, right? And as school board members, you know, like we're, we're at the local level, so we see how this is playing out. And um, I just want to say, I I honestly think it's really pitting us against each other with our labor partners. Um, and that it's really a call to action also with our federal and state leaders, right? Like, we got to figure out how we're going to be able to address long-term medical costs um that I feel that can easily uh be overrun by any newly negotiated deal. You know, and so um, while we are just um a local jurisdiction and we have to now make the tough decisions, um, I also want to say on record that as a school district, as SAC City Unified School District, we're feeling that, we're feeling that tension here locally. Um, and, but unfortunately, as a school board, we have to make those tough decisions and balance our budget. And so I think that until we have a a long-term plan, right? Um, at the local level, we're going to have to make these tough decisions. One, it's the negotiated savings, but at the same time, in addition to that, it's having a plan to reduce costs. Um, and that's, you know, reviewing all of our contracts, looking at the recommended, recommendations of FICMAC regarding class sizes. Um, you know, looking at all of our contracts and how we operate, which I have to get credit to Rose. I think she's been doing an incredible job and that's the reason why we're here today. And so I think, um, I just want to say, you know, similarly tonight, I I I too will be voting no. Um, because I think, um, you know, we can't continue to keep um voting yes on a budget that keeps getting disapproved. Um, we have to act as a board as well. Um, and um, I think it's, it's going to be really tough, but I think we can do. And I think it's, it's going to be really tough, but I think we can do it. And so, yeah. And Rose, I just want to say thank you because I honestly think we wouldn't be here today without, you know, your, your, your hard work. I don't think, you know, our district will be here today. And so I just want to say thank you to you, just, just for everything that you've done, you know, in terms of just cleaning our books and doing what we need to do to make sure we have all the information we have on hand. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Vang. I know that Superintendent Aguilar has talked about a commitment to bringing a fiscal recovery plan before the board, recognizing that we have a December vote that will have to be made. But we also know that the state auditor and multiple other audits have said outside of negotiated savings, that there are very few options. And so I want you to be prepared that there were board members who refused to take votes on layoffs that actually helped to ensure that we were staving off some of the budget cuts that would have to be made in classrooms. There were board members who asked us to save critical preschool programs that were costing the district more money than we were able to justify. And so as you say, we want to address these things head-on and have these difficult conversations. I would ask each and every one of you to recognize that some of those individuals who are making these statements are not willing to make those difficult decisions. And it is painful and it is hurtful to our students. It is hurtful to our teachers. It is hurtful to our entire school ecosystems. But as we bring forward a fiscal recovery plan that is not going to rest on negotiated savings, the cuts are going to be hard and they are going to hurt the most vulnerable of our children. And we know that. And we know that that is something that is very different than just saying, these are hard conversations, courageous conversations, conversations that should have been had long ago. You know, I, I think when the state auditor broke down the lack of available options that we had, I thought it was sobering, to say the least. And I could not agree more with Member Murawski that we should be looking at special education as a continued way to both meet our moral obligation, but also cut, cut expenses. But I do want to remind board members that people seem to have forgotten that we laid off hundreds of individuals in one of the most challenging board meetings we have ever had by way of trying to meet the minimum obligations of class sizes in the collective bargaining agreements and the minimum staffing obligations in the collective bargaining agreements. We did that. It was painful and it allowed us to avoid going off that fiscal cliff. What we have before us is going to be equally painful, if not worse, if we do not do the hard work of recognizing the collective responsibility to a negotiated solution. Superintendent Aguilar, I, I'm, I want to give you an opportunity to respond.
Yeah, thank you very much, President Ryan. Thank you, board members, for your comments. Actually, we'll say to you that we will certainly huddle as a staff as early as tomorrow morning after some of the comments from this board meeting and do everything that we can so that prior to our first interim in December vote, we can present to you. Really what we'll do is we'll dust off portions of, of prior presentations and, and put something together for a future board meeting between now and first interim in which our board can take action on, 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 on some decisions that, that are outside of the negotiations process that, as Member Vang mentioned, FICMAT has called out, as well as the state auditor, who also has called out some of those recommendations. So I, in some ways, I look forward to that, to that, to that meeting and having our board take action on a fiscal recovery plan that basically incorporates, again, and has us just dusting off some of those decisions that we have brought to the board in the past. But we haven't taken the action that, that the board is referencing right now. So I certainly will make a commitment to plan for such presentation before the first interim so that we can possibly incorporate that in the, in the actual first interim vote that's taken at the December board meeting. So thank you for, for your comments. And again, I will make sure that we have something available to the board for, for action.
Do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move it.
We have a second. This is a roll call vote, student preferential vote.
Member Ryan.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Minnick.
Aye.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
No.
Member Vang.
No.
Member Wu. Five, two.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Item 10.0, communications. We have our employee organizational reports. The first organizational report will be presented by SCTA. I don't have the list per Article 18.1 of the items. Oh, I do, of the items that will be discussed tonight. Per Article 18.12, SCTA has up to 15 minutes. They will be reading a comment on district budget transparency on COVID exposures, distance learning, reopening of schools.
The comments are from David Fisher, reporting on SCTA. And he says, good evening, I'm David Fisher, the president of the Sacramento City Teachers' Association. It is an understatement to say that teachers have no confidence in your fiscal management of the district. On August 20, 2020, the board approved a quote revised budget that included 73.3 million in books and supplies and projected the 2020 to 21 school year would end with a 90, a 39.5 million deficit. On September 15, 2020, the board approved the unaudited actuals that showed that contrary to district projections of a 12.3 million deficit in 2019, 20. SCUSD ended 2019, 20 with a 23 million surplus, a 35 million turnaround. Now today, fewer than six weeks after the board approved the budget on August 20th, the numbers have changed dramatically once again. Not surprisingly, the district's finances have improved by tens of millions of dollars. Today's budget increases the spending on books and supplies to 101.3 million. And in the span of six weeks, the deficit shrunk by 21 million in its unrestricted fund or 3.5 million per week since August 20th. And, and in an extraordinary admission, the CBO admits in her executive summary, the books and supplies category is used to balance restricted budgets when funding is known but exact expenditures are not. Once decisions are made as to type of expenditures, the budget will be moved to the appropriate line item, unquote. Last year, the district spent 11.1 million on books and supplies. This is nearly a tenfold increase in books and supplies, which, according to Ms. Ramos, the district will not spend on books and supplies. Using the 11.1 million as a baseline, how will SCUSD spend the extra 90 million in its budget? The district's track record of presenting wildly inaccurate budgets goes back at least eight years, if not longer. But isn't this the kind of stuff that Dave Gordon and SCOE fiscal advisor were supposed to prevent? This is not the first time we have raised these issues with this board. According to you and, and SCOE, the district has been months away from fiscal insolvency since August 2018. And yet here we are, over two years later, with more money in our reserve fund than at any time in SCUSD history, 93 million. That needs to be repeated, 93 million. It is hard to come to any other conclusion than this school board is purposefully manipulating the budget for its own political purposes. For some reason, the board seems to believe that repeatedly demonstrating its inability to budget and unwillingness to hold top district administrators accountable exemplifies a lack of resolve to fix a broken system, a system you are responsible for creating. The same political calculation has led SCUSD to take an adversarial approach to labor relations. It is the only large urban school district in the entire state that refuses to abide by Governor Newsom's framework for labor management cooperation and the only district in the area that did not reach an MOU on distance learning. No school district in the state has had more unfair practice complaints issued by the California Public Employment Relations Board than SCUSD, resulting in the district spending millions of dollars on its ethically challenged law firm, Lozano Smith, rather than on students. And as recent, and, and as the recent communication from Carla Fawcett, the president of SEIU Local 1021, which represents our classified colleagues, this adversarial approach is not just directed at certificated staff. As we begin to discuss how school might reopen, SCUSD once again will face that inevitable choice, a path of cooperation or one of conflict. For the record, as we have stated in our recent communication with the district, quote, "educational equity is tied to health equity. We must ensure that there is COVID-19 health equity in all neighborhoods and places across, across our county before schools return to in-person instruction." Grave health inequities exist related to COVID-19. A disproportionate number of people of color are getting sick and dying from COVID-19. A simple scan of zip codes across our county shows how the virus has had a devastating impact on low-income neighborhoods and communities of color. Community COVID-19 conditions must be steadily low in all zip codes and with the necessary public health preparedness in place. When some get a head start, it deepens inequality. And the rush to open school doors with high background transmission rates places unsafe pressure on low-income communities and our most under-resourced public schools. We think it is unrealistic to expect those conditions being met in the 2020 calendar year. Thank you.
We have an organizational report from SEIU.
No, there are no other comments from any other bargaining units.
Thank you. And we have our district advisory committees, first the community advisory committee.
Yes, we have two live comments. One from Terrence Gladney and one from Rich Vasquez. It looks like Terrence Gladney is on mute. Rich Vasquez, are you available to make your comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
How many minutes did I have?
Two.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. Just giving an update on what LCAP is going on. First, I want to thank Mr. Ramirez Fong, Mr. Harris, Ms. Oladipo, and Ms. Alexander. They have really provided a positive space, you know, welcoming space to be able to, you know, try to see what's going on and help us with the dealings, the district. But again, we've been working on, we were working on unusual, we were bridging the gap with the LCA plan. So that was a little different. We had to stop, you know, for the LCAP for the regular year and we had to adjust to that. So that was a little different. But we're past that and now we're back to normal, trying to work on the regular LCAP. And one of the things is a big thing during the meetings is how are we going to disrupt this status quo? I'm looking at the numbers and just for the Hispanic, that's what I am, the category I'm Hispanic in the district. For math, it's 70 below. And for the English language arts, it's 40 below standards. If I dig deeper into my school site, Haron Johnson, where my daughter is, we're in red. ELA is 81% below, 81 points below. And for math, it's 170 points below. Look what just happened last year. My kid had eight math teachers. You know, what type of concern is going on? This is the experience I'm living at the site. The teacher now I have this year, they don't even know my child had eight teachers. They don't even know vacancies that exist on their site. What, what site is this that you had eight teachers? Mr. Vasquez, well, it's your own site you're working on. So again, you know, how are we going to get these people to know what's going on on their sites? Again, 170 points below, that's disgusting. You're not setting us up for success. So we need something to change. We need ways for the LCAP to, to evaluate the effectiveness of what we're trying to, you know, our recommendations, right? We, we are, we're only at advisory capacity, but we are bringing the experiences of your sites. We can't, you know, we want to see, I don't want to be a checkmark anymore, right? We're sitting here, we're telling you, how many of these LCAP priorities have they been? We got a bullet, 30 points. How many times has this been on the LCAP? We need to start making changes. We need to start seeing the effectiveness. We have no time to lose. My kid, I'm one foot in, I live your district. You ain't providing nothing. I had no sports, no music, no arts, no after-school programs, no nothing at the elementary site. And now I'm at the high school site and I got nothing. So we need to disrupt this status quo. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Vasquez. Mr. Gladney, are you ready to give your comments?
Yes, I am. First, I want to acknowledge Rich because I remember years ago, I met him when I was Sac Council PTA president. And he was just a dad trying to find himself engaged in his PTA and community at Tahoe. So every time I see him, I just tell him how proud I am of him. And we need to continue to honor voices like Rich's, you know, that are really just speaking for their children. And, you know, it's unfortunate because I've seen it, even though I've been in a leadership capacity in multiple places in the district, as a parent advocate, I felt unheard at many times. So when you guys hear Rich's voice, I hope that you guys really open up your ears and your hearts and listen to him. He's representing his daughters. As a single dad, he's representing his daughters and his family. So please honor and respect that. And don't hear the tone of his voice. You hear the tone of his voice, hear the passion and the love that he has for his children. Second of all, when I look at the parent groups that are represented right now, you know, it hurts my heart to see that we don't have a Sac Council PTA anymore. But I understand that that's reflective of the current state, that there is no Sac Council PTA that exists. So I would ask that, you know, maybe we make this space reflective of the active committees, such as Bond Oversight Committee, where we are only an advisory committee at this point anyway. I would love for Bond Oversight Committee to be engaged on a monthly basis because we only meet quarterly again. You know, if there are task force like the African-American Advisory Task Force or these other task forces that are created ad hoc, why would, why do we not have them speaking and represented at the stakeholder portion of the board meetings? Like, that's the only way that we're truly going to get a pulse on what's going on. You know, so I would just ask that you guys consider that so that we do actually have the voices of more of our actual stakeholders reflected in these, you know, in these board
Thank you, Karen. And do we have other district advisory committees?
We have a report from the community advisory committee. And it says, good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Aguilar. On October 20th, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., the community advisory committee will hold our general meeting for caregivers of children who receive special education services. During this meeting, nominations for several open positions will take place. This November, the CAC will hold our election for these open positions, which includes Chair, Vice Chair, Treasurer, Secretary, and Parliamentarian. The CAC continues to work on a sample template which reflects how the special education program and budget is utilized for our student population. Board Member Murawski has been supportive in this task and there is an open invitation to each board, to each member of the board and the superintendent to attend our meetings. The community advisory committee made a couple of statements and requests during the last board session in public comment. We have yet to receive a formal response from the district regarding our concerns. It is our hope Sacramento City Unified School District will continue to work collaboratively with our membership and ensure all communication is transparent. We thank you for your time and hope to hear from you soon relating to our concerns. And we also have a report from D-LAC. And it says, good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, Board President Ryan, and board members. We would like to bring awareness to the bylaws inherited by D-LAC council. D-LAC council has repeatedly requested discussion of D-LAC bylaws and a formal list of D-LAC representatives, contact information, and preferred language. The district provided list of D-LAC representatives is very short and many D-LAC representatives on the list are SCUSD employees. SCUSD administrators must ensure their D-LAC representative is an English learner parent at their school site, elected by the English learner parents at their, at their school site. The inherited bylaws prevented us from hosting our D-LAC meeting on September 9. Matt Turkey confirmed that the bylaws very clearly stated that our meeting required quorum, defined as a defined as a minimum of two DLEC council members and ten DLEC representatives. Though DLEC Council was present, we did not have sufficient participation by DLEC representatives. At this meeting, presentations would have included CONAP and LCA plan. The lack of DLEC representation by school sites is not only embarrassing, but also a missed opportunity to work in collaboration with critical stakeholders, our English learner parents. We also fear that prior meetings failed to meet the threshold to establish quorum. To increase DLEC representation, we ask that every board member commit to supporting a site administrator in their area by coordinating and reviewing the oversight of English learner enrollment, programs and services, and parent engagement. We must ensure that each site with more than twenty-one English learner students enrolled has a fully supported ELAC structure, including language accessibility and DLEC representative as defined above. By supporting a different administrator in your area each year, you would be investing your time, relationships, and resources to prioritize building the capacity of administrators and parents in order to improve outcomes for English learner students, including sense of belonging and reclassification. Additionally, ELAC and DLEC facilitation requires a designated administrator to ensure equal voice of all representatives, attention to federal progress monitoring regulations, and thoughtful consideration of advice provided by English learner parents. It can be very discouraging for parents to invest their time, energy, and emotional labor to advise SCUSD and not see any of their recommendations move from consideration to action. If you want to engage English learner students and their families, listen, discuss, and act on it. Please stop defending status quo policies and practices that do not prioritize English learner students. With the introduction of LPAC and more rigorous criteria for reclassification, students and families need your support. The reclassification rate in SCUSD is below the state average. We can and must do better. DLEC Council thanks you for your time." And then we have one public comment on the District Advisory Committee section, and it's from Alina Cervantes, and says, "Thank you for contacting the California State Superintendent of Instruction, Tony Thurman, and alerting him to civil rights issues happening in our district due to our lack of a distance learning agreement with SCTA. Our state constitution mandates that children have equal access, and that is not happening. Some children are not getting the services they need. Some are being cheated out of live daily instruction. This is not acceptable, and no one should be standing for this. Please continue to call SCTA to the table to negotiate a distance learning plan and continue to let the state superintendent and governor know what is happening to children's educational rights in this district." And that's the last public, that's the last report and public comment.
Thank you so much, Ann. So Student Advisory Council.
We've forgotten a report for tonight, since we already spoke of the stellar student item.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Board Member Shay. Item 10.3, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, President Ryan. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't muted. I wanted to change things a bit. One of our public commenters early spoke about the fact that sometimes, or often, in SAC City, we don't talk about some of the positive things that are happening throughout our district in light of so much tension and conflict and anxiety across our system. So I jotted a few things down and just wanted to make sure that I spoke to the public commenter who inspired me. So I do want to just share that, you know, there's always things to celebrate in SAC City Unified, and today I want to just express a couple of those things. You may have heard that last week, we learned that Phoebe Hurst Elementary was named as a Blue Ribbon School. This is a very coveted award, of course, and it affirms the hard work of all of our educators, our families, and communities in creating a safe and welcoming school and schools throughout our district that master challenging, master our students, challenge our students toward mastery and engaging content. Of course, we're so proud of all of our teachers, our site staff, our administrators, our entire community. Certainly, this recognition is well-deserved, as Phoebe Hurst is an exemplary school within our district and continues to shine in its efforts to help our students excel and achieve. Today, we also teamed up with the California Student Aid Commission and its executive director, Ms. Marlene Garcia, to kick off the first day for students to begin completing their free application for federal student aid, better known as FAFSA. Also, the California Dream Act application and the CHAFI grant to receive college financial aid for the 2122 academic school year. We held a very brief press conference, and I want to thank our board members who attended, especially our student board member Shay, who provided all of us with inspiring words that conveyed why this work matters so much. I can't, I just cannot say enough how important it is for students to complete the FAFSA. The window kicks off today on October 1st. We know that in this pandemic, we'll have to be very creative to continue to encourage and empower our students and families to complete that application. But that application really is the first step to our students pursuing a post-secondary education. Our district has worked very, very diligently to get more students to complete that application, and I'm just so proud to have announced this morning that our completion rates of FAFSA have gone from forty-seven percent in the 2015-2016 school year to now seventy-six percent for our students who graduated in the 1920 school year. That's just a phenomenal achievement for our students and for our district. It means that nearly three hundred and thirty more students were positioned to reach their dreams last year. And I also want to commend our own West Campus, which won the statewide Race to Submit campaign by getting every student to complete a FAFSA. And I know that on behalf of the board, I can say that we are incredibly proud of the work there. Of course, this is just one piece of a larger puzzle of what we're doing for our students district-wide. We've increased our graduation rates to almost eighty-six percent, which exceeds the statewide average for the first time in many years. And I actually look forward to providing an update very soon to our community about graduation and A to G completion rates for our 1920 graduates as soon as those are posted by CDE. We hope to see those in early December. These are just a few examples, board members and community members, of positive things that are happening throughout our district, thanks to the amazing work of our educators, of our administrators, in partnership with families, to make sure that we are serving the needs of our students. All of it even during a pandemic, and I want to just congratulate and commend staff who have adapted. I know that we are going to be conducting virtual application workshops to support our students now that we are starting to get ready for the application window for colleges and universities. In the end, you heard from Ms. Rose Ramos as well in her presentation that we still have serious fiscal challenges, and we still have inequities that we must overcome, and we will continue to operate with a continuous improvement mindset, and we know that we have a very long ways to go. We are focused still squarely on our goal to disrupt inequities and to help our students. Again, I'm encouraged by the discussion by our board after Ms. Ramos's discussion, and will again commit to bringing back a fiscal recovery plan for the board to take action before first interim in December. But again, today, I just wanted to, as I was inspired by one of our public commenters, take a few minutes to talk about the positive things happening in our school district, and I want to thank our teachers, our counselors, principals, administrators, every school site staff member working in SAC City Unified. Your work, whether it's teaching our students, running schools, cleaning schools, disinfecting schools, keeping our buildings in shape, or feeding our students, all the work you do is appreciated and noticed. So I want to just thank everybody again.
Thank you.
I'll yield that to President Ryan.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Item 10.4, the President's Report. I will be brief tonight.
President Ryan, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do have one submitted live public comment on item 10.3 from Terrence Gladney.
Good evening again, everybody. I had some questions. I feel like, you know, it'd only be fair if I allowed the superintendent to answer them either now or, I guess, later, if it requires time. But I know that you have expressed, even back in September, that you guys are understaffed in IT. You know, as an IT professional, as someone who God put me on the path now in March to, you know, engage myself in education as a teacher as well. I looked at Elliot's profile, and it says that he left in February, so I don't know if that's a vacancy that has been open since February, or if there was an interim or whatever for the CIO, I'm not sure. And then, I guess, on behalf of, I guess, stakeholders that think like me and kind of look at things a little bit more from the outside, and then just kind of assess things just for what they are, I'm wondering when, on September 3rd, the Student Advisory Council gave a reflection of what students responded as far as a survey of enjoying shorter Zoom sessions and more time to absorb the work, when student board member Shay provided his own assessment of the current situation. And then, teachers and parents, basically stakeholders that are closest to the students or other students themselves, basically said that, you know, this is what the research is saying, and less screen time is better. I'm wondering what guided the push to require a higher number of minutes on synchronous learning than what other districts were doing, or what even was recommended as a best practice? And then, what guided the decision to initially enable local school site administrators to deliver the communications to families about the scheduling, but then reverse course, and then have a unilateral communication come from the district office to families, which actually created the confusion that you spoke out again, and trying to, I guess what you said, remove inequities? But we all know that equity is not equal across the board, it's serving those with the greatest needs. So we still, even, I understand we don't have an MOU, I understand there's no agreement in place, but I feel like what I received from my daughter's school site initially was reflective of a cohesive, collaborative product of multiple stakeholders being involved, but then that was undermined by your office or yourself, I guess, directly by saying that that's not what you wanted. So then you were pushing, and what I've seen from teachers...
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gladney.
So Superintendent Aguilar, I do want to just note, a couple times tonight, we've actually responded to public comments, which we don't normally do in board meetings, and I just, I do want to recognize that, because it would create a very strange precedent if we started responding to all of the public comments. And so, you know, I don't know if you would like to follow up with Mr. Gladney in an email form, but that seems most appropriate.
Yeah, be happy to. I appreciate the questions, and will work with our staff to make sure that we're in touch with him.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Like I said, I will be very brief. I want to also recognize the bright spot that was the recognition today that we have made huge gains in the number of students who are both applying for and accessing financial aid and removing that barrier to being able to achieve their college dreams. To see such a significant amount of growth, almost thirty percent in just a couple short years, and to see that translate into millions of additional dollars going into the hands of our most vulnerable students is quite remarkable. And to compound that at a time when we've continued to see graduation growth for our high school graduation rates and seeing larger achievement for our Black and Brown students, as well as our special education students, though insufficient to what we would like to see, because we demand and expect even more, it is very encouraging to see the upward trend, in particular when we know that this directly correlates to a student's ability to continue on after high school and go into college and meaningful careers. So I want to thank the entire team for the work they have done to systemize those practices so that more students, irrespective of the school they go to, have access to these opportunities, which I think is so critical. I also just want to thank Rich Vasquez again for being such a courageous and real parent voice. When Rich says that his daughter and all daughters like his daughters deserve to be able to have equal opportunity, I listen, because Rich is an incredibly involved parent that has been part of our neighborhood schools for more than a decade. And like Rich, I experienced the inequities of not having access to music and arts programming, not having access to free after-school athletics programs, not having access to free opportunities to go on field trips in SAC City. And so the fact that Rich and I flash forward many decades and are experiencing those same inequities for our own children is unconscionable. And I appreciate that, Superintendent, we are committed to bringing forward a fiscal recovery plan, but I want to remind everyone that Board Member Prishet often speaks about her first board meeting, in which they chose to close many schools, in which they chose to rip apart communities and disenfranchise the most vulnerable among us, rather than make structural changes to the budget. Followed not shortly thereafter by ending busing for students, which has continued to create fissures throughout our community. Followed not shortly thereafter with the pink slipping of our music teachers, our arts education programs. All of these things are the choices that we will be making in a fiscal recovery plan that does not put at the center of that plan a pooled healthcare benefit savings. And so I appreciate our board members for encouraging those difficult conversations, and I will expect each and every one of us to make those decisions when that comes before us in November, even if it is uncomfortable, even if it means that we are going to have to make choices that will really require us to confront, are we choosing our students and the well-being of our most vulnerable students? Or are we making the kind of lasting changes that will in fact see our district and all stakeholders involved forward? And so, Superintendent, thank you for your commitment to bring that plan back in November. Thank you to the team for the hard work you're doing to disrupt inequities and to make sure that we're finally seeing the kind of growth in student achievement that should be the focus of our work day in, day out. Item 10.5, Student Board Member Report. Board Member Shay.
Thank you, President Ryan. Good night, good evening, everyone. I'm too excited to end. It's been a long night, so I'm going to keep it brief, no advocating for anything. I'm just going to let everyone know what I've heard from students. On their first month of school, it is hard to believe that it's been a whole month, and subsequently to believe that it's only been a month. But students told me that it's been a lot more organized in spring. Teachers have established norms by this point, which have been helpful. Lots of teachers doing excellent work in coordinating in a versatile way. However, some students are frustrated that some adults might be treating this in a similar way to a normal school, assigning homework in a similar way, and I just feel like that's unproductive. My eyeballs are fried after this board meeting. I'm sure that a lot of students have difficulty with hours and hours of homework on top of the in-person instruction, live instruction that we have to deal with. The uncertainty between the union and the district is a constant source of instability for students looking ahead for the next year. Some students also identified a lack of cognizance towards student issues, excessive online homework is what I just mentioned. There's also been an outpouring of appreciation for staff, teachers absolutely working their hardest in conditions that have been really, really tough. A month in, it's really encouraging to see not only the numbers that the superintendent pointed out in his report, but also how we've managed to face our challenges. Although we haven't been able to replicate what it's like to be in school in person, it's definitely been amazing work on the part of students and staff, and I'm incredibly proud of our district. And I'm incredibly proud of our district for that. Finally, students want to note that health concerns are still a huge concern. I mean, a couple minutes ago, we got news that the president and the first lady have the virus. So it's still a huge deal that, as Ms. Flores presented hours ago, that rates are actually still going up. So the virus is still a huge concern. Social distancing needs to be practiced by students. Despite wanting to enjoy this year, I see a lot of Instagram stories all the time with people, with their friends, without masks, living it up. And I think that's really counterproductive if you want to come back to in-person school. Because students know that in-person school cannot be replaced by Zoom. And in order to come back, we need to continue towards a lower tier with the virus. Yeah, that's all. Thank you so much.
Outstanding comments. Board Member Shayk, thank you so much. Item 10.6, information.
I'm sorry, President Ryan. We have one final live comment from Terrence Gladney on item 10.5.
President Ryan, the time is 10:13.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the board meeting to 11:00. Do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor?
I'll second it, and I.
Board Member Shayk, I know that I sent you a message via LinkedIn, but I just wanted to tell you in front of your fellow board members and the public, just thank you for your courageous, insightful comments on September 3rd. And I, as an adult who has ingrained myself in the inner workings of the district, could never be more proud of a student than I was of you. And I mentored many, 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 many young people. And you are a reflection of what we want our youth to be. So don't ever be afraid of your voice. Give as much light and power as you can. And we, as adults, can always learn from you guys. We can always learn from our young people if we just open up our eyes and our ears and our hearts. So please continue to harness your voice and grow it and amplify it. And if I can ever do anything to help you do that, then I am more than happy and honored to do that. But thank you. You are a blessing.
Thank you. Item 10.6, information sharing by board members. Do we have any board members that have updates? Okay, Board Member Murawski.
Thank you, President Ryan. I am, I am, I'm not excited about where we are with COVID-19, but I am excited to share that Sacramento County has a new campaign that Victoria Flores mentioned in her presentation, turnsacramentoorange.com. Okay, you can check it out. So, you know, we're, we're, hopefully, most people are familiar with the different tiers. We started in purple a little bit ago. We just barely, as Victoria mentioned, got into the red zone. And we can easily slip back into purple, which means all the things that just opened will have to close again if we go back and stay in purple. So I, we're just at a critical inflection point in this virus. You know, Dr. Fauci has said, if we don't go into fall, into winter, driving this virus down very low, it's, we're going to be in a very bad place. So Sacramento County has this campaign. I'm just, I'm more than, more than just wanting everybody to know about it. I want everyone to advocate for it. I want everyone to share with their peers, their friends, their family. I want everyone to know about it. We have to do this together as a community. So what they're asking is, is simple things. It's not a big lockdown. It's not closing everything. It's wear a mask at all times when you're inside. Observe social distancing at all times and avoid indoor gatherings. Don't gather indoors with anybody outside of your family. If we all do those three simple things, we can turn the tide on COVID-19. So I'm just really encouraging everyone to embrace this campaign, share it on social media. You know, just share it with people and, and, you know, let's, let's make it a thing. So I just appreciate your attention to that. And I, I just want to, you know, while I have you all here, just verbally, you know, thumbs up or, or just commit that you will share, you will share it with your community. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Member Murawski. Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So I too wanted to recognize Phoebe Hurst Elementary School for the incredible national recognition, the Blue Ribbon Award 2020. I did, in addition to the facts that the superintendent shared earlier, Phoebe Hurst was one of 33 schools in California and only one of two in Northern California to be recognized by this national award. So I just want to thank all the students, teachers, school site staff, principal, and parents for ensuring that, that Phoebe Hurst continues to, to be a successful school and that the students continue to, to meet the high academic rigor. I also wanted to share, just, you know, I am the, I guess, board liaison for DLEC. And it was pretty disappointing that they did not, they were not able to form a quorum in order to, to, you know, move forward with their meeting. So there was a lot of conversation about the bylaws and whatnot. I did, I did immediately reach out to principals in my trustee area that, that, whom I thought would have the 21 EL students that would meet the threshold to have an ELAC at their school site. And consistently, I heard that, one, it's, it's challenging, right, for parents to become involved because of time constraints? And two, the time of the year may have been early, too early, because they wouldn't have had elections just yet. So they, they still needed to work on that, but they, they've all committed to, again, reaching out to their parents and encouraging them to be part of an ELAC and also be part of DLEC so that more participation and their voices are heard at the district level. So, so just wanted to share that, but it's a group that needs quite a bit of support. There were also some, some technical difficulties with translators and interpreters and whatnot. So, so just wanted to share that. There are some parent sessions that are being held. I plan to attend one tomorrow and one on Saturday for ELAC parents so that they understand sort of what the role and responsibilities are for ELAC parents. So just wanted to share that with, with, with all of you. And, and I will join the campaign, the orange to, what is it, October or Halloween? Yeah, so thank you.
Orange by Halloween.
Orange by Halloween.
I will too.
I think we've got several commitments to turn it orange by Halloween. Looks like there are no other board member, board member com, oh, board member Wu, got you.
I just wanted to say that between the 13th and the 17th of October, supposedly I'll be in Dallas, but I won't, but I might not make the 15th meeting. It depends on how the conference goes. Council Great City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Wu. And if you end up going, we would love a report back. It's great to hear what's happening with other city school districts across the country. So with that, we're moving on to item 11.0, the consent agenda. We are going to move to take 11.1A in part and amend it before we pass the consent agenda. 11.1A, we are asking to remove the nine items related to the youth development expenditure so that we can get additional information on that item prior to taking a vote. Do I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
Some of.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, student preferential vote?
Yes, on all open session items.
And is this a roll call vote, Jerry?
I don't think so.
Okay, all those, it actually says roll call vote, roll call vote. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Yes, you just amended it to take out certain items. Now you have a motion and a second preferential vote for the actual item to, to approve. So we need a motion, a second, and a preferential vote, and a vote to approve the amendment you made by your vote.
Got it. Thanks, Jerry. So we took action on the amendment. Now we're going to take a motion on an approval for the amended consent agenda. Second. Okay, student preferential vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, Superintendent.
Member Ryan?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Minnick?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Vang?
Yes.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Do we have any public comments on the consent agenda? No, no public comment. Thank you. And item 12.0, future board meeting dates and locations. Our next board meeting will be held on October 15th, also a virtual board meeting. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a good night, everybody. Stay safe, wear your masks, and let's turn the city orange by Halloween.